Good evening. June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of the town council. We will start by standing for the pledge allegiance in the name.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Item number four is proclamations and presentations. We don't have anything in front of us.
Chair, I just wanted to request, we received an email from the Town Soccer Club, I guess, the boys, youth or team, team won the Connecticut State Championship. I'm wondering if maybe we could, you know, do a proclamation or do something to recognize that company.
Sure. Is there, is there a proclamation process?
There's a proclamation process. However, we took. Sports championship. We can discuss it with staff. We can look for another way to recognize them. And I'm happy to present some stuff over the next couple of days when I meet.
Yeah, if you could send Jacob and I. Yes, totally. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. All right. We will move on to item five, which is public petitions, communications, and public participation. This is on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council and does have a two-minute limit. We'll go back and forth between Zoom and in the room, and everyone will have a chance to talk. So in the room. Online, is there anyone online who would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to sit. Before we move on to item six, would you like to speak?
Oh, with participating?
No, we haven't officially moved on yet. If you'd like to speak, the council will be back.
I will do just that. Thank you very much, Chair. Hello, town council. I'm glad, for your sake and for mine, that a budget has been passed. With that said, I will say my property still suffers from non-potable water. At this point in time, I've now failed three potability tests, all for a different reason, bacteria in my well. An ongoing concern. My hope is that this will be fixed. There are people that are more knowledgeable than me that seem confident that it will, which I am hoping and grasping that they're correct. With that said, there could be potential damage to something like internal plumbing based on some of the regimented outlines and instructions given to me. And I will further up with the council, given that, and hope that this will be taken care of in the project that's ongoing at one sixty eight Mountain Spring Road. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else, which is to participate, move on now to item six, which is public hearing items, of which we have none. Item seven A is reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Like to start here. Lisa sent the good news this, today, I think, today, that it looks like that the state has made the final deposit for Birch Grove. She's going to confirm that when she returns from vacation. And at that point, with the final payment, I think we can move ahead with the process to dissolve the building committee, the Birch Grove Building Committee, now that there is actually no other items we might need them for. So Brian, that might be a future agenda item.
Sure.
To get that done. So that is great news. And a big thank you to the staff who worked amazingly hard on getting this project done, and then all the follow-ups that needed to be done. So thank you so much.
One second, Chair. Your, the future agenda item, you mean to vacate the commission?
To dissolve, yeah, or whatever, however it needs to work.
Yep.
Right, because technically it is still.
You got it. It is.
Don't forget to thank yourself in that committee.
Yeah, I would definitely like to thank the committee, because it was quite an undertaking for this group of volunteers. Lots and lots of meetings, especially towards the very end. And, you know, getting that project done ahead of schedule, under budget, and.
And surprises.
With all the surprises during COVID was quite an accomplishment. So it really was a team effort, and I know that everything, I do hear from staff and students even in that school who have a lot of joy there. It was really cool to see the students dress up once a year to match their hallway colors. Since each hallway is its own color, that's how we designed it. And so like the purple hall, all the kids wear something purple, and the green hall, and that's really cool to see all that work being played out by the kids, so.
Can I just say something? Don't forget to thank yourself, because I remember when it started.
Was quite an undertaking.
Yeah.
Thank you. The fire house opening?
Yeah. So we had a meeting Thursday. We discussed about all the items for your road station, which is hearing completion, hopefully. So I don't know if we want to go into specifics though.
Yeah, I certainly heard it was a.
Yeah.
A lot of things we talked about, so it's probably going to be more mid-July, we'll have a partial CO, just because frontier needs to come out. I guess thing. There were some issues with the kitchen cabinets. They were installed wrong. Not ADA. Can you talk a little bit about it there, Heather? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So the kitchen cabinets were installed wrong. They weren't ADA compliant. Once the building inspector came out to look at it. So make long story short, on that one, the subcommittee decided after a few different options, just to do a volunteer. It was right the first time. It's not going to interfere with the fire trucks or whatever apparatus is going to be going in that station. So that's what we decided on, take eight weeks. But again, the fire station, at least, they'll be able to move ahead on that. Then also. The bay door should be arriving soon. Those have the new three panel windows. Outdoor work should be getting close to completed. We talked about the water drainage issues by the pond. Once it's more complete, they're just going to have a stallapin come out and fix the areas that need to. Look, I'm missing, oh, oh. And then the final thing we talked about is next month, we'll be coming to council on July twenty third, I think we said, regarding the urban grant of a million dollars. I don't know what Megan is just going to be asking council for something. It's just going over a million dollars, and then whatever left, left over from the budget for this station will be added on. There's already a list of priorities from leadership on the fire station, and I think, Brian as well. And I think that's really getting close, finally.
On the, on the kitchen panel, is that going to cost?
Thank you. Yes, it was caught, I believe, by a building inspector, right, Brian? He went in, the sink was wrong, the counters, and there was, it was called a, a non-conforming work notice that was issued because of. So that's what we felt.
Yeah.
And we made a motion to make sure it was not the October. Yeah, so I don't. Listen, Brian, with it, but is there anything since then?
The builder isn't exactly on the same page. That's a bold tip. And there's some delegate negotiation. In fact, he's completely against. There's negotiation. I have my feelings about a kitchen that will never be used, but we need it to be ADA one way or the other. Look at those options, but at the same time, I'm not going to. Sacrifice the project, the kitchen is never.
Because they was there. Oh.
Sure.
So.
Sure, but there's things that were on the ball, and we should point those out to us in court. Nation and chalk, and it's just, it's not as simple, it's not that simple, we put that. So we're working, we're working through it.
Yes, why?
I'm not going to compromise. ADA kitchen.
Oh, we can't. But we should notify them.
It's ongoing.
If you hear anything perfect, we'll just keep doing nine.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you for that update, Brian. Yeah, so that's it. But anyways, it's getting close.
Yeah.
That's most important, I think, so.
Very close to being at a point where.
Yes, yes, that's the key. Like you said, Brian, we don't really need the kitchen either, we need the station portion. Okay. So I can talk on the bar for the K one. Yes. So we'll be meeting next month. Lisa's on vacation, but she's here right now. And I know Brian's going to talk about it later, about how much money we have. Roughly, we have fifty-three thousand dollars. The Silver's project's still going on, so whatever's left over from that, we'll obviously come over and we need to spend the money by the end of the year for two years to use the money. Anyways, that's really all that's going on. That'll be the rest of it.
Any questions? Let's move on to seven B, which is reports of town council liaisons.
Easy today. Do not have any words or admissions.
Council meeting check? Sure. So petition with people disabilities, my last week, June twentieth. It's nice to get together. We haven't seen them in a while. There are RC, Tom Hamer Green, and the legal stuff that's going on. And for Brian, I think he doesn't have to put that later in this. The chair wondered about a sign of one ninety-five to one drivers with boat residents that are wheelchairs. I don't know. That can be looked into, Brian.
The DOT ask, I can.
And then we talked about how to get more information out to people, digital backpacks when school starts again. We're going to keep the survey open a little longer. And now that Crandall Park is more ADA compliant, I think you copied this email too, Brian, that we believe that it can be added onto an ADA park space called Kid's Bitty. So people that have ADA can bus up on the Crandall Park and use it, which is great. I think that's really it. Yeah. Great, thank you. Yeah, you're welcome. Chuck, all right?
Yeah, I went to the planning and zoning commission meeting last night. Wasn't too heavy of a meeting. They set a public hearing date for July twenty-second on a few different matters, including a special permit for. Business, I believe, in the commercial and industrial area. And I'm sure they got an update on their product design, and it's pretty light.
Thank you.
Yes. So DEP Wildlife was, this is for Conservation Commission. DEP Wildlife was out recently. They painted it as a two-polar wildlife management area. So this is a seven-acre patch of forest that had bounced back, with just some amazing tree and shrub regeneration. This was an area that had been previously fecon down to the ground, completely vast open area. So some of the growth that they saw coming back, some white oak, red oak, birch, and aspen have all grown back to create a dense patch of young forest habitat, which is great. Also during their visit, they were able to hear prairie warbler, blue winged warbler, a black and white warbler, some monarch butterflies, and the ruby-throated hummingbird, so.
Good old ruby.
That's right. It's all good news. I know that the Conservation Commission always tries to empower folks to visit all of our trails in Talon and all of our parks in Talon, not just. Not just the one down the road here that I'm liking up, that Brian did a great job. The crinels. Crinels are very popular, but there's lots of other trails in town here. And then also for Conservation Commission, just an update for the Bigfoot scavenger hunt. This is at the Lucy Conservation Area. So if you're following the orange trail at Lucy Conservation Area, use your phone, take a selfie with each Bigfoot. If you find all eight, please send them to conservation@colinct.gov. So the scavenger hunt will run from June first to the thirtieth here, so we have a couple of days left. And submit all your entries by July fifth. So everyone, enjoy that, stay safe, no littering on the trail, stay on the trails. So again.
What's the name of the parcel that you first mentioned?
The first one?
Yeah.
That was.
Cool.
So that's pretty interesting to see that area completely reforested.
Where is that? I know we could, like, the north east part.
Sure. So I'm still catching up, because I'm one of those, I love crandles guys. I'm still catching up on all the trails that we have here, and, you know. The Conservation Commission is really just celebrating. I mean, they're fantastic. Yeah, they do a great job clearing all the trails and having volunteers clear trails and restructure the bridges, so they've just been doing a great job, so. But yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can talk about the Water Commission. They met, very quick meeting. Things that, a little bit of patching going on on the water lines, and just got a pump to replace the Anthony Road, Anthony Road five that failed. So here just a few weeks, so had to get water, replace the pump, still under warranty, so. There's also a water tank that's leaking. So they put an external patch on it. Need now, we're going to request an inspection of this tank, just to see how bad shape this tank is. We also extended our living to water agreement for another ten years.
I jump in on that, Joe.
What's that?
Yeah. All right, so, so there was a pump failure, and we needed to supplement our wells down in South River Road are being supplemented by Connecticut Water. There's some action on social media about it. Then they have been fixed, they're back online, and they're back on the wells from South Road again, along with coming. That being said, I reached out to our water commission, and they reached out to Connecticut Water, saying we would like some sort of communication to our residents that are on the water system about exactly that. And both agreed that they were going to do that at some point, and may have already have done that. The tank you're referring to, I don't know if anyone saw the video, but it was just, it was, it was raining out the top of the tower. It's failing. We're going to have to replace it. I went up to, obviously, myself, up the summit. It's a big, massive. Just fixed by that point. It was a big, massive tower. If any of you haven't been there, literally, I bet.
Oh, okay. Okay. But I don't have tower.
You're just tapped into the tank. Good, good job.
No.
So, but it's, that is a, obviously.
Sorry, where's this tank?
It's. So I'm at, like, Anthony Road, but like Summit is closer to, like, the Marrow Road side, as you go down Summit. Okay, it's like, but then the goal is behind Anthony Road.
Okay.
Yeah, like, you went off the Birch Grove driveway, and it's straight down the left to Woods.
Yep.
Oh, that's a hard to find drive. But it's, you know, it's, it's a part of the reason that the water, this aging water system, that the town operates with the assistance of Connecticut Water. One of the many reasons that it's in our best interest to move our water system over to Connecticut Water. So just wanted everyone to be aware, this is, it just failed, the tank, so it started leaking, and so we hope we don't have to patch it. That's all. Thanks, Joe. Sorry.
Do you have a, do you have any kind of mistake?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's some legal headaches there, and some people that are very thorough in their efforts, and very deliberate in their movements, and it's a slow process, a legal process. Moving along fine. The Water Commission's completely on board. Crystal Springs really throws a monkey wrench into the whole thing. It's a, it's own one-off water system that we have to basically assess and appreciate, and there's, there's just a lot of hangups there, but it's moving along.
I know Connecticut Water is looking forward to birch.
Yes, we met two weeks ago with Connecticut Water, specifically about, just philosophically, myself, our town attorney, Bev, and Connecticut Water, just fills out, again, some of the major hurdles that lie ahead. And of course, we talked about the water, the pump failure, the tank, and those types of problems. And of course, Pura and Deep don't exactly, are exactly, but the way the town of Talon's been operating, and they just don't have the staff. We have no staff for the work of water, Talon Water, so.
I can also confirm that as a town water customer, I did get a notification on May there. Was it in May? That, you think that went down?
We were looking for something. Yes, that went out. We were looking for an update.
Oh.
And they're going to give one at some point, so that's good. Let me know when you can get it.
Okay, I will try to remember when I get it. I'm sure they, I'm pretty sure they texted, called, depending.
Yep.
Counselor Butler, did you have any update?
I do not.
Then for me, the district commission meets tomorrow night. Frog has been meeting, and I haven't been able to attend all of their meetings. They have one tomorrow at noon. I have a work conflict, so I cannot attend that.
Me neither.
Yeah. It looked pretty light from the agenda that I read. And the other thing about Frog is that they did send me a, or all their members, a survey for legislative proposal for next year. Survey responses are due tomorrow. Oh, no, I'm sorry, they're due, I have a month to fill it out. That's July twenty-sixth. But if anybody has anything that they'd like me to include in the survey responses to Frog, please email them to me, and I will make sure that it gets included in my comments somewhere for the survey. You know, they, they represent, this is CCM, sorry. CCM represents all the municipalities in the state, so Crow表示just a small subset. So there's this ECM survey. But please, you know, feel free to ask anything along for legislative ideas, and I will include that in my survey of responses. I know the Health District had a meeting last week. They didn't have a forum. I was not able to attend that one either. I have family conflict, but they're going to meet again.
Yep, that relates to, they have more to give in the strategic plan.
Yeah.
And we'll meet again, and Joe bought the ice, I answered like.
Yeah. Yeah.
Response.
Yep. So those are my updates. But we can now move to eight point one, which is new business, the consideration of a resolution appropriating fifty-five, sorry, five thousand for various school improvements, appropriating one point two million for the purchase of a fire rescue truck, and appropriating four hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk improvements, and authorizing the issuance of up to two million, one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in bonds and notes to finance the appropriations in the setting of a public hearing on July night.
Thank you, Chair. This agenda item is required to introduce a resolution to set the public hearing for these capital projects totaling two point one five five million. The debt issuance for each project will be reduced by any existing allocated funds, donations, grant proceeds, et cetera, as it related to the project of five. These are all things that obviously we went over in our capital improvements plan for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, and approved through the budget referendum, the five fifty for school improvements. If memory serves, I believe it was paving, a concrete patio, a dishwasher, those sorts of things. The one point two for the fire rescue truck was something that John and I worked as we tend, as we moved cooperatively to pare down the fleet, to get us down from, down to four engine tankers, we're down from six when I got here, and then appropriating the four hundred thousand to the sidewalks, if you remember correctly, and it turned out unfortunate. We were right that the legal process was going to drag on and on, so we moved the four hundred on ARPA and put it on to, into debt, and then we took items out of debt and put it into ARPA. And this is, this is to discuss that. And my, at least, I hadn't got to hear any questions in relation to it.
Are there any questions? So we're not actually authorizing payment today. We are setting a public hearing to borrow this money for these purposes, and after the public hearing, we will authorize or not the appropriation.
Correct. Lisa, is there anything you want to add?
No, I think you've covered pretty much all of it. Unless you have any questions, this is the standard process we do each year, and it'll finalize the appropriation that went through the referendum process and all that, but it'll finalize the approval, if so be it, for the bonding for the projects. And the bonding will be net of any grants, if we receive any grants for any of the school stuff.
Are there any questions?
So regarding the fifteen four hundred thousand for the sidewalk, what do we have like a whole other year? How much longer you think the legal part will go on for?
I really, I really don't want to guess. I'll discuss more further, but it's been positive, very positive for the town to this point, but it could just drag on and on. But at some point, there's an end of the line, but I don't want to guess or give any of the ideas.
I just want to get it done, so it's just.
So do I.
Just your, I know.
The restraining order split them.
You can go back on the range.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so that, that was one positive, the many positive thing.
So just, it's like we have a public hearing, wrote on it, we can theory issue the debt then, this doesn't need to go to referendum, or some reason, I'm saying this.
No, essentially, it was already voted through the budget process. But Lisa, you want to bring them through the timeline as to everything that goes on?
Sure.
Sure, I'd be happy to. What happens with this, this is, falls under our charter section nine, I don't know, nine dash eleven or fourteen. I don't have the exact charter number, but this falls under non-referendum debt. So there's a certain amount that we're allowed to issue debt without having to go to referendum, although it's been, you know, a public process throughout the way. Now, what happens is, is we do not issue this debt right away. I have a whole game plan of, you know, as the projects are proceeding, this just authorizes me to issue the debt when the time is appropriate. And once we start moving with the projects and know what our cash flow is, then we will issue the debt going forward at that point. And I usually issue debt in September of each year, and it'll depend on, you know, where we're at. For example, with the sidewalks that may be pushed out another year or so. I don't know how long it's going to take. You know, the, the fire truck will take some time once they get out with the bidding process and all of that. So, so the debt won't be issued right away until we actually have a cash flow and contracts in place.
Okay, thank you. What is the threshold where we do need to go to referendum or debt?
Go ahead, Lisa.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
It's the threshold for debt, for to go to referendum. Was it five million?
Uh, no, no. It is. Three percent of the tax warrant, and that. And that usually is right around two point six million or so. It, it varies each year depending on where our tax warrant is going to be.
Thanks. Okay, thank you, Lisa. All right.
If I might, I, I do believe we do have on our capital plan at least one referendum, item requiring referendum approval, and that's the streets, the money for street pavement.
That's.
Right, the multi-year thing. So that, the intention is still for that to go to referendum.
In November, and there's another one lurking out there for, for events as well.
Okay, but that's not this.
Nope, this year is, is the tar.
And that's.
Not tar, the.
Street paving.
Yes.
And that's coming up. We're, we still have some processes.
Yep.
Administrative process to do to get that done.
Yes.
So that, maybe that's what we're thinking.
Probably, yeah. But we're in good shape for that. Land out with the clerk and Mr. Wyman and Lisa and all those folks. So we're, we're in good shape moving forward for that as well while you're on the town.
Okay, that's all.
Does anyone else have a question?
Yeah, Lisa, can you remind me how long that debt will be for? And then do we have an approximate interest rate? And also, will this debt come after our new rating? Which I believe it will, right? So this, could this be impacted by our rating?
Sure. Let me try to take one at a time. The interest rate right now, I think what we used in the debt management plan may have been around a three percent estimated interest rate. That's based on our triple A rating. It's all going to depend on how well the market is doing at the time that we actually go out and issue debt. What happens is, is we will go for a rating before we issue the debt. So the debt will be based upon whatever rating we get at that time. So for example, we'll probably be going for a bond rating in August of this year. And at that point, with whatever debt is issued at that time, will be based on that bond rating. Again, like I said, I won't be issuing the debt until we actually know what our cash flow needs are for the particular projects. Now, depending on, we, we do the amortization, which is like the schedule of how the debt is paid based on the life of the asset. So normally, long-term assets would go twenty years, but if it's something like a fire truck, the amortization period may go less. And that's all based in how, you know, it gets structured when we issue it. So it, it all depends on the life of the asset for how long we will issue the debt for.
Okay, so, so just hypothetically, if the truck lasts ten years, we'll only get a ten-year bond?
Yeah, it, that, our trucks tend to last a little longer than ten years, so we would probably push that out to fifteen or eighteen years. So let me shut my ring off. Someone's at my door, sorry. So, you know, we'll normally push it out that long and, and they do tend to last that long with the, the maintenance that's done on them as well as trying to keep it as long as possible.
So is there any advantage, I, so, okay, let's say it lasts fifteen years. Is there any advantage to issuing the bond, like from an interest rate perspective, to issuing the bond for ten years as opposed to fifteen years, even though the asset lasts longer than the debt we've taken on?
Absolutely. And that's, that's a decision. You know, we try to look at, of course, the less amount of years you have a loan for, the less interest you're going to pay over that time period. A lot of times, we also have to look at the impact on the budget and how it's going to impact the mill rates. So a lot of times, we've tried to keep a stable debt service payment by structuring the debt in such a way so that it doesn't change too much. But yes, we, we do look at faster amortization on a lot of our assets that we finance.
And what's the three percent based on? What's the like of?
That. That's what our financial advisor gives us and it's basically based on our bond, our bond rating as well as where the market is at the time that we do the debt management plan.
No, I understand that, but what's the, what's the year? Because three percent seems pretty low. I don't, I don't think we get a twenty-year bond at three percent. So is that based on a ten-year bond?
No, it's based probably anywhere from a fifteen to twenty-year bond. And, you know, it's, with the triple A rating, we, we do very well. And, you know, sometimes that, there's a lot involved, but that's where it tends to come out at.
And he'll be here in.
July.
Yep, July, to any, any and more of these, not specifically to talk about triple A, but you could even pepper more of the questions in.
And if you have any specific questions ahead of time, please send it through your, your chair and vice chair to Brian and we can get it over to Barry so he can be prepared to respond.
I, I have a few.
I do. So the, the monies that we would be appropriating to school, various school improvements. Are we able to drill down and narrow that scope at all or what are we looking at?
But the, the details are included in the packet on page four. And they were also approved as part of our capital, capital plan.
I can get those to you, Alex. Lisa.
Yeah, that's where the capital plan is, in the appendix. But it's also listed out here on page four of our packet. Resolution one, I, A, B, C, and D there.
Right. And this is exactly what was in our budget book during the, the capital presentation as well as what's in.
I'm on the digital copy, so I'm on the fourth page of our packet.
Page four, that up. Perhaps.
Yep, the really technical looking, see, town of, town, town council resolution appropriating five hundred fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
That's starting on that page.
I went out and looked at every one of these or discussed with, well, things that I can't look at, like technology.
You're not, that's not the packet, that's council goal.
Well, I mean, you, you have to just drive around the back of the old high school, middle school.
Okay.
And look at the pavement. I mean, it's, you know, it's surface of the moon back there. The concrete patio out in front, it's a hundred years old and the dishwasher and everything. You know, I, I don't like spending money on anything, so I go and look firsthand and inspect before I put it anywhere near you guys.
Lisa, the, the, sorry, I'm looking for the, the debt service plan that we passed as part of our budget is, includes and covers these items, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And are we expecting grants for the school portion of this?
There, there may be some, for, for some of the schools, but we will have to see when the time comes. Whatever the Board of Education can apply for grants for, they definitely will. I couldn't tell you the exact projects without having the budget book and I don't have it with me. But I think I may have noted in, in our spreadsheets as to which ones may have some grants forthcoming. So not all of this money will be issued in debt if we are to get grants.
Thank you. And my one other question was, I know that you recommended that the sidewalk be included in year one. Is there a limit to the length of time where this resolution would be effective in case that the sidewalk issue is drawn out longer than the end of the fiscal year, say?
Yes, it's usually three years.
Three years for contract or three years for full disbursement?
For, no, for the, to enter into a contract and then you have time to get it completed after that.
Thank you. Okay, so the resolution that is before us is a resolution, the, the motion that we're looking for, sorry, it's a little complicated. The motion is to consider a resolution appropriating five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars for various school improvements, appropriating one point two million for the purchase of a fire rescue truck, and appropriating four hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk improvements, and authorizing the issuance of up to two million, one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars bonds and notes to finance the appropriations and set the public hearing on July nine. So the motion is that consideration. We are not voting on the appropriation tonight. We are mo, we are voting on the introduction of the resolution and setting the public hearing for its consideration.
So, second.
Are there any questions about any of that?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
So I was just looking, maybe on page seven on. Recommend the roll call, I don't know, that's hard.
Well, that's for the full resolution that would be decided on after the public hearing. We do happen to have to do a roll call vote tonight because we are hybrid. So we will be doing a roll call, but that particular one is for the full appropriation decision, and that's not what we're deciding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the resolution? And we will do a roll call vote on this. Counselor Newton?
Aye.
Vice Chairman?
Aye.
Counselor Yudichan? Counselor Moran?
Aye.
Counselor Butler?
Aye.
I am also an aye, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Item number two is the general budget discussion and consideration of a resolution to establish the mill.
Okay, this is the process to set in stone, done through the referendum as defined in, in Charter C nine dash seven. And that is, and I'll read it out to be specific, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, town operating capital budget of sixty-three million, six hundred and sixty-five, nine hundred and forty thousand was approved by voters at the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Reprand, budget reflects a spending increase of two million, one hundred and fourteen, five hundred, hundred and eighty-three dollars or three point four percent, which requires an estimated tax rate of thirty-seven point seven seven mils. This mill rate reflects a one point one eight percent increase. The mill rate for motor vehicles will be set at thirty-two point forty-six mils as required and set by state legislature. This rate has remained up. Requirement to set the mill rate is in sections, as I said, C nine dash seven, the charter. The charter provision states that council shall fix the mill rate up to ten days after the annual budget referendum. We were at day seven.
Any questions or comments? Were there any changes in any revenue estimates that might impact the mill rate?
No, not that I bet. And let me go further that it's, it's, it was a footrace, but we should get the bills out before July first, as well, I forgot to mention it.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution in item eight point two, which would set the mill rate for the town?
Some moves, yeah, stated in item eight two.
Second, sorry. Any further discussion? All right, so we will again do a roll call vote on this because we are hybrid. Counselor Newton?
Aye.
Counselor Shay?
Aye.
Vice Chairman?
Aye.
Counselor Yudichan?
Counselor Moran?
Aye.
Counselor Butler?
Aye.
I am also in aye. Agenda item eight point three is consideration of a resolution to declare various equipment in disrepair or obsolete from the Board of Education.
Thanks. This is a standard process when they want to get rid of some old equipment. And these are essentially two pianos, one from the nineteen twenty, nineteen thirty era and one from the nineteen sixties that are no longer usable. And that's all they're just trying to do appropriately.
Are there any questions? And this was approved by the.
The Board of Education.
Thank you.
We know where those stand.
There's a policy in place about getting rid of, they'll follow the policy.
Sure they will.
So there's a resolution in agenda item eight point three to declare these, this equipment obsolete and be disposed of in accordance with the policy. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further, any further questions? Okay, we will do a roll call vote again. Counselor Newton? Counselor Shay?
Aye.
Counselor Moran?
Aye.
Counselor Yudichan?
Counselor Moran?
Aye.
Counselor Butler?
Aye.
I am also an aye, so that has to be unanimous. Thank you. Item eight point four is the review of town council goals that were set on January ninth, twenty twenty.
Great, thank you, Chair. When council was elected and put in a position, we formulated goals. They will be reviewed twice, I believe, this year and next year. And this is my, just my report, not yours, on where, where the council, I believe the council is in regards to moving towards these goals. So I'm happy to start or answer, I don't know how you want to do it, Chair, on any of these goals. The first one, support the town manager, various stakeholders exploring ideas of the new strategic plan. So basically, in regards to that, when it, when it comes to the town manager's office or the town on that side, the idea that the strategic plan has been discussed in the past, our research, we believe is approximately fifty to eighty thousand. Really, it was eighty, eighty-five thousand, but we believe we could probably get it cheaper. Given the budget issues, we were not able to budget for it this year. While, you know, again, the strategic plan is popular, as we all saw in this budget process, we are handcuffed, completely handcuffed by each budget. And, and monies, again, we receive essentially from the state. That being said, we're trying to proceed with input from our zoning commission, economic development commission, our conservation commission, land acquisition, people with disabilities, just about everyone involved to move forward. We do have a P O C D, which does have a strategic plan. And it's done, I believe, every ten years and due for an update in twenty twenty-nine, but we start working on that in twenty twenty-seven. As a note as part of that, we've already moved forward with some of our core planning. I don't think any questions or if you guys have any suggestions. Next.
Yep.
Succession planning and succession planning, basically to maintain what we've been doing and continue. It's an important one, difficult in a, in a, in a town the size of Townland, and I don't have a staff of, you know, fifty that I can pluck one person out and say, hey, this is going to be the person. Some departments, that is possible. If you look at public safety and DPW, if, if something were to happen, we could, we could move into succession pretty quickly. But we're also looking as, as, there may be retirements there as well, but we're in good shape with those. Our financial director announced that she will be leaving in February of twenty twenty-five. We've been working a meeting and she's been great, helping HR to successfully navigate this critical position. In each town department, over the last two years, we've been able to identify potential staff should, again, as I said before, something sudden happened and we needed to replace, we would be in, in, in pretty decent shape in regards to that. We made, thanks to council, we altered, you, you allowed some flexibility in hiring. That should help us. Also, you, you know, Townland, no offense, tends to pay less than, than other towns in so many of these director positions. You guys assisted in still facilitating decent candidates by. Um, you guys assisted in in still facilitating uh qual- uh decent candidates by uh allowing that flexibility. So, uh, that's where we are with that. We're, we're in, I believe we're in really good shape uh regards to that. Any questions? Go.
Um, again, you know, I know some few months with Lisa, but you know, just saying, been really great working with her. And I know her retirement will be well deserved. Um, because it's such an important position, though, I'm just kind of wondering, um, when, what is the timeline for when we'll find out about successor is? And could you go into a little bit more detail about the person for the budget season? Because I know February is pretty close to when we're going to start seeing your budget. Get that, get that, farm right into the.
There is no good time. Financial director will leave, and and in all honesty, Jacob, this will keep me up at night. Um, exactly that.
Yeah.
We will, we will in August begin looking at posting.
Okay.
Post in uh post and start interviewing in September uh and look to hire at the start of the year. And we'll look to find some funding for a good month or two of overlap.
Okay.
Uh, in regards to that. And so, uh, I think we're, I think Lisa's been great, uh, Mike Wilkens and H R's been great uh about moving forward. But obviously, we'll be incredibly careful as to who we hire. And I believe town council, um, has to bless the director.
Yeah, so and just so I understand, so we're trying to do a couple of months of over overlaps. That person has to start maybe like in January, so to speak, and.
Yep.
But not formally take the reins and tell them.
Correct, and hopefully, you know, that that person, you know, with the process starting in August, um, could already be paying attention.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, or will start paying attention.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to go to the the financial directors academy and block somebody right out of the A C A P. You know, we're going to get somebody hopefully that has some experience um dealing with this sort of uh with with municipal budgeting.
Yes, thank you, Brian.
It has been, though, incredibly difficult for surrounding towns over the last couple of years, to include Ellington, who just, when I asked them about it, they pitch bits, I believe, they hire a temp. Um, Lisa's assisted in hiring of other towns, she sits on panels and um talks about how just, it is just incredibly difficult to hire um a financial director, but, you know, hopefully we'll wrap it on the hat.
The investment on that.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, these ARPA funds ensure the execution of all the funds uh by the deadline. So, uh, the approved projects so far, uh, almost four point three million. We got fifty-five that remains to be allocated. Um, we could spend that overnight if we wanted to, so there's no uh real hurry. Uh, we are waiting the uh Parks Facilities Garage project to determine if we need uh need those remaining funds. My guess is Director Lappin will come in under project. I meet with him weekly on this uh to ensure that he is uh moving forward and and meeting within the timelines. Remember, we are using a new um engineer. To this point, we are very happy uh with that engineer and uh moving forward uh just fine. I thank the Chair uh and everyone and Lisa for their work in ARPA through here. I I think in looking at some of the headaches other towns have spent, especially around budgeting and and uh not using and using, using ARPA for ongoing expenses, which we didn't do here, um, I think we're in um, we're in really good shape. Any questions? Okay, uh, save the taxpayers money by prioritizing uh strong fiscal policies, such as our triple-A bond rating. Uh, a- as Councilman Shay unintentionally pointed out, the importance of maintaining that triple-A bond rating is we get a really good rate uh as we go out to debt, obviously saving the town um a lot of money. Very difficult um to maintain these policies, and I know how much stress it puts on everyone to, from council to staff uh during the budgeting process. Uh, I believe we're in a good place. Um, Lisa's here with any questions you have on that and so on. Any questions? As I said, July ninth, our advisor will be here. We lean heavily on him. Any questions you have? You, you know, you want to ask him, great. If you can give me a heads up on him, I can get him to him so you can do it more thoroughly. Uh, but I'm, but I think we're in a good spot.
Okay, I check up. So I know he's going to be here, which is great, but since we had so many field budgets, is that triple-A bond?
Um, as, as been told to me, failed budgets um certainly do not look great. Um, but hopefully, we're strong enough in other areas to overcome that. Again, fingers crossed, but again, there's some unknowns in regards to the new um processes and evaluations. Well, she looks to me to us. Great question for him. Uh, certainly ask him that when he, when he's in here, but I've already asked him that the first chance I get anyway, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, my, my will probably do a question asking as well as, is what, what impacts from an interest rate perspective? Will degradation of our bond rate be?
He'll give you that. Um, and in fact, I'll ask him that if we go down one or two, or if I can have him hear that. Uh, Lisa, if you could, um, when I ask our, our advisor, you know, we got downgraded one step or two steps, what that would potentially cost us in in existing debt.
Sure, we had, we did do a um presentation last summer with that as well, or at the beginning of the season um of the cap, when we were going over the capital plan. And uh over, over the life of a, a bond, it was about a half a million dollar increase if we were downgraded to one notch. But I can, I could send that question out to him again to see if anything else has changed.
Does that, does that impact our historical bonds that we're in change?
Not historical, no, no. The historical bonds are locked in. Going forward, as we're issuing debt, that's where it's going to impact us. And based on our debt management plan, the calculation that he did as an example, if we were to be downgraded one notch, would cost the town over the life of, of the, the debt um and another half a million dollars, not each year, but over the life of the debt.
But that's obviously going to depend on what the debt is, so what.
Absolutely. Well, it's, it's based on our debt management plan. So if debt changes, of course, that would change all that as well.
Moving on. Uh, okay, supporting pay-as-you-go policies through capital expenses, um, with the input of everyone, our financial director, myself, and council. Uh, we continue to increase the use of general funds, grant funds, thanks to our grant position, use of ARPA uh to try to do more pay-as-you-go projects, as they said before, you see other towns seriously struggle with this. But as debts, debts fall off the books, the hope is to reallocate some of those funds towards capital projects rather than the issuance of debt. This becomes more stressful in the budget cycle, but I believe, again, we held up well um this year during. Any questions? Oh, moving on. Explore regional services to find savings. It's something philosophically just a fantastic idea. Um, I meet regularly uh with the, the town manager in Vernon, Ellington, Coventry, Wellington. I'm waiting to get uh with Stafford. Uh, I met with Wellington um this week as well. We really want to look at animal control for that. I attend C C M, Pro, Cost, uh, and, and other consortiums. There's nothing that pops up. It's not like anyone's knocking on our door to get into regionalization efforts. I do, at every one of these meetings, talk about regionalizing ambulance as a priority. Um, and because everyone's got a headache with their ambulance, uh, especially our neighbors. I look at um the, again, animal control and down the road, I'd love uh public safety, uh, all aspects of it to, to go through that. Um, again, nothing has, nothing has jumped out at us. We do, we do rent out our animal control facility, for lack of a better term. Um, uh, and it has been successful, but again, uh, nothing uh long-term at this point. Any questions?
I have questions about that.
Okay.
I have seen um my, across my professional desk, uh, several um towns getting um Urban Act or state grants uh for animal control rehabilitation. I don't know, animal control centers, I think in the bond commission meeting uh that happened uh earlier this month, there was an issuance of s- saved debt for an animal control facility in a specific town in eastern Connecticut. Um, had we pursued additional grants uh to, or worked with our legislative delegation to try to find funding from the state for this, that's.
So, first, let me say that, that in our capital plan, I believe, is a new uh facility. One, I will work to regionalize that when we do go through that process. And to, you know, Wellington, do you want to jump in and do you have any funding? Uh, but as the picture gets clearer, Megan is aware of that, uh, and we're, and looking at that stuff as well. So something we would also uh dig in and look to is.
Yeah, I would think from a state perspective, we might have better luck securing a grant if we are regionalizing that, right? Because they can give money to one thing that impacts multiple.
Yes, uh, I, I agree. Um, and our direct, our D P W director has built a facility prior to um on the chief as well, too, with some great savings, so uh we're in a good position for that.
Thank you.
Utilize and leverage, uh, goal G, utilize and le- uh leverage data and recommendations from D P W in the public safety evaluation. Uh, our public safety consultant study is just getting off the ground now, literally. In fact, I'll scratch it off my town manager's report there, so they've been, are reaching out to the fire chief um this week. Uh, and thanks to Mike Wilkens in, in getting that uh moving forward. Uh, you know, as soon as I have that, uh, I'll share that, that report, I will share it with you and then begin to employ the, the recommendations as best I can. Uh, we received the good D P W consultant report last year. We refer to it often and refer to it every time we're buying um a piece of apparatus. Uh, you know, some of the things in there, like um hire an administrative assistant to track all their, all our parts, all our maintenance on every, all the vehicles and enter the data in the system. We just don't have the money. Um, so uh we're doing the best we can with it. Uh, in regards to um data from the state police, and I, I got kind of covered this twice. Uh, we're still, we're still looking to receive next-gen data from the state police on a permanent level, has not been solidified. Um, this is professional detailed crime and public safety reporting and data mapping, um, something any typical police department or town certainly uh would want to have. Uh, I have not heard anything significant from the state, although they have checked in periodically to say we're still working on it fully. We'll like to know if we hear anything beyond that. I haven't gotten anything other than anecdotal stuff. Um, that being said, you know, the, the rudimentary stuff that we do get from the state police at this point, Lori Sherwood's been able to boil down um and isolate and kind of track a few things like burglaries uh and such, and, and, and almost any, every category that she's able to do that, we're showing that, that crime is going down uh here in town. But again, it's hard to farm out a lot of those things, you know, was it, was it, was it an arrest? Was there not an arrest? You know, these are, it's just so rudimentary as to, to what uh is being reported. But it seems like the reports or the uh ports of incidents are down in, in uh many of those areas. Uh, questions? Go ahead, go.
Um, so once, it's great to hear that the picture board is getting off the ground. I was wondering, because um we read their proposal, one of the things they said, and do some interviews with stakeholders, including um elected officials. I was wondering if uh we would have an opportunity to speak with any of the consultants.
You will, I believe, yeah, absolutely.
Do you have an idea for when they'll be on site or what?
I would guess within the next month or so, Sarah Beth would reach out to you and say, and, and start setting up some times. If, if you want to do it, if you do, you know, you have some times availability and then that's. Or they'll send out a questionnaire or something along those lines that you would fill out.
Excellent, that's important. Um, the second question I had, it's great to hear Lori is working on some, some data analysis. Um, your thoughts, Brian? Do you feel like that what she has is sincere, do you feel is still kind of rudimentary to, to look too rudimentary?
No, no, a lot of it's guesswork. You know, and it's, and, and, you know, looking at it, you know, was it an arrest on the highway? You know, we don't know, and, and, you know, different things that happen, so that it's just so hard to boil down.
Yeah.
Is there value? Sure, there's always value, and, and I'm happy to, to get that to you, that if you can make head or tails out of it. But again, it's guesswork, and I don't want to be misleading should next-gen report come out, if we get that from the state police and it says something uh entirely different.
Yeah.
But happy to share it with you. I, I might have already given you what we had. Uh, I would think it was like over the November, if she had gotten that to me, but.
Awesome.
It's so skeletal of crime that she has.
Yeah, I mean, good to look at it, but like you said, got to take it with a grain of salt just because all of you.
Yeah, correct, so.
No, it's great that she's willing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but she's not.
Anyone else?
I think.
Go ahead.
Is there anything that we can do as a council to help with the request to the state, uh, troop safe? When the lieutenant was in here, he seemed very confident in being able to provide us with this data. And yet, we still haven't had it. Uh, and, and I think I, I don't want to speak for others, but I, I would guess that there's general agreement here that we, we all want to help you in this if there's a way for us to do so. Uh, so if you could keep that in mind, um, if you think it would be helpful to invite him back uh or to write a letter, um, or to pass a message along through you that we, we are very interested in this data. Uh, and we were, we continue to be very optimistic that, that he will come through on his uh, you know, verbal commitment to get it to us.
So concur in that and thank you. Uh, there's, you know, there's some concerns as to what they will show to us, and I wanted to find that out. You know, what he said he's going to do, I don't know if he'll do that on. I don't know he'll give us what, what we really want and need. Maybe having worked with the agency, transparency might not be their strongest point, and I think they would uh admit that. I'm looking for some guarantees and transparency and some, in the form of an M O U and some permanency. Yeah, we'll get it to you, you know, and hey, we'll show you this, this, and this. Here's what we're willing to show you from the troop commander level is, might not be what we want as a council or as a town. We might want something um a little bit more elaborate and not something cherry picked. Um, so I, you know, I want a holistic view of public safety in the town in relation to policing that we have here. Moreover, I want to know, you know, how many hours were the troopers here, how many shifts, our resident troops specifically? You know, how many arrests they made, you know, a lot. We have none of that. Um, as I'll get into in the next stuff.
So, so the only question that I raise would, would be who would facilitate that?
So, good question. So, so they.
That's, that sounds like administrative trooper work to me.
Nope, um, any trooper can do it. They just need the next gen of training. And it's not a heavy lift at all. Once you, and then, once you generate the reports, it's, it's just a matter of going. If you save that report, you regenerate it each month or each quarter as we wanted to recommend a report to us um and provide that, that to us. So it's not a heavy lift, Alex. Any trooper can do it. This was, this was something while I was there that I started sniffing around and asking myself, or for myself, uh, when I knew I was coming here, how do we get that stuff? And it was pretty, pretty easy. The problem is setting precedents, and if we, the town, town, want all this public safety data, well, then every other resident trooper town is going to want all this public safety data. And keep in mind, I also wanted some say in this regards to who we hire as a resident trooper uh here in town as well. And there's, there's, you know, there's a lot of reasons for that. And um I just like some sort of say in that, and I think any town manager wouldn't. I don't think it's too heavy of an ask or a lift in considering the technology and the next-gen side and the data and what, what you just asked, it's, it's not too heavy. Right now, I don't know if a trooper leaves, goes, or hiring, who's coming, it's surprise, here's a new resident trooper for you. You have no say in it, absolutely none whatsoever. You take him and that's it. Um, and that's difficult, bringing somebody into the town when you want to foster trust, trust between the community and the police department. We want, they, I'm sure the, the town would like to know that we had some say in who comes here. So these are the types of things I'm trying to get hammered out in the M O U.
When is our contract up for renewal?
Year and a half ago. So we're still, still operating without a contract with that M O U waiting to be signed. But legal affairs is, is with it. We still have the same level of policing, still paying the same rate. Um, and we've showed some savings here and there.
Okay. Um, is this something we should put on our list of things to talk with our legislative delegation about when they come in September?
Need to do that.
I, I guess.
The preservation.
Okay, yeah, we want to be helpful, I think, is, is the main goal.
Absolutely, bring it up. I know they want the data as well. Um, and I'm sure they want their towns. Um, I think the center represents several state trooper towns. Um, but again, I kind of, I don't care if it counts. I don't care about the precedence. I just want talent.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, and, and I, I, I'd want to do it as quietly as possible. If they don't want every town knowing that we have this agreement, fantastic, uh, but as long as we get our data.
Thank you.
All right. Um, go ahead, I'm sorry, Molly.
Thank you for all that information. I'm just looking at the monthly um manager's report. There's something in there, but.
Yes, and that's what, that's what Lori collects.
Okay.
And then kind of compares it. And then now we have her looking at it last year and they, you know, it's no like month to month, you know, like this month compared to this month, there's something like, I'd like to compare crime in the summer of twenty four to the summer twenty three. Uh, that's, we can't do that.
That's just fine. Okay.
But she's doing the best she can. And I was so happy when she got me that first report, so.
All right, thank you.
Um.
Counselor, say.
Yeah, one more question about this, Brian. If if um if we make these kind of requests, strong requests, are we risking or can we expect that they're going to increase the costs, particularly for now, now the contract?
Nope. Nope, there that that the the cost of the state police are defined uh within within the contract and and fair, right?
I'm in a contract, but we're definitely expired, like a year and a half.
Yes, but the contract is less about pay and more about, you know, provide them an office and um that sort of thing. It's, we will pay them, but it's not the kind of the pay for the the troopers is not uh itemized, like, hey, you gotta pay extra for that. That's us. Yeah, I mean, we're not getting paid to have them do speed enforcement on Old Stafford Road because we asked for it. This is just something I would ask a resident trooper to do. Ordinarily come and sit here and 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 speak to us and generate effort.
Okay, so so does every town basically pay the same thing? I mean, if you have like, yeah, if you have three resident troopers. If a town has three resident troopers, do we expect they're paying the same thing that we're paying?
They they are, but it's based on the seniority and cost of that trooper. Um, you know, if you have three senior cops, it's going to cost you a lot more than three junior cops. So it fluctuates.
And the state pays a certain percentage of the first two?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's eight, the state is eighty percent. Twenty percent.
I think you had it. Yes.
And then uh.
I think I actually, Lisa, Lisa, you, do you have, you, do you remember that number?
Yes, um, I'm pretty sure it's eighty percent of the first two. Or, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um. I could look it up.
I think we pay eighty percent of the first two.
Our first two and and then a hundred percent of the rest we bring.
That's available to any town.
Yeah, I'll I'll take a look at the spreadsheet real quick.
All right, thanks. Anything else?
They don't have general. Okay. Um, I know we have four down, but you know, juniors or one like.
Depends on how you define junior, um, but they're all, they're all relatively inexpensive while we're comparing to that.
Oh, well.
Yep. So that's what we might, you know, if we're going through the budgets uh process, you know, understand each year they're on, each year they go off at each of their levels, you know, the cost of what unless they trip out or get promoted, then we start again. That's when we want to have some say in it, you know, um. You know, is there a trooper that's been on the road and they don't want him in this position and they they're going to dump him off on resident trooper to get him on the air. Trooper, not saying that happened, but that's kind of the stuff I'd like to be aware of. It could pick up this expensive trooper who doesn't exactly produce a lot. I want to see production. I want, you know, before we bring him in here, does he have a bunch of affairs, complaints? Yes. And these are all the types of things I want to look at.
Yeah, I agree that we pay any to them.
Some say. Yep.
They're just different because they're not department, part of troop safe, just.
It is.
They're all great.
They are.
I think we're good. Thank you.
Great. Encourage resident trooper. Uh, I I I encourage resident trooper involvement in the community. You know, we had kept loss of uh true brackling was a loss because he was here for so long. Uh, everyone knew him. Um, he knew the events as well as any of us here in town that he would go to um and stepped out on everything. Uh, currently, right now, we do, uh, Trooper Nuccio does do a good job in stepping out on darn near as much as she can out there and is great about getting out of the cruiser, walking around, shaking hands um and doing all that. So we're happy to have her. Um, once we get things settled out, if if we get an administrative trooper, um, we would love to move back towards that. Uh, right now, basically, when an event's coming up, I reach out and ask uh lieutenant and and he's been great about making sure that we have um a trooper at at all. He's been fantastic. The more of the grade was the last thing that I can remember uh that they stepped out at. But I mean, from the menorah lighting, uh, they've they've been very good about stepping out. Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, um, it's eighty five percent of the first two that the state pays. And then we pay the the rest.
Eighty five percent of the first two that this.
Eighty five percent.
The state pays eighty five percent or we pay eighty five percent?
State pays eighty five percent.
The first two. Right, so it's I I thought that that we paid eighty five percent.
I just quickly rule the step, but it says each town shall pay eighty five percent of compensation, but twenty nine, yeah.
I I apologize. I'm I'm looking here.
It's okay, Lisa, I I.
Yes, it's, it's, we pay eighty five percent and then a hundred percent of the rest. I thought they paid eighty five percent.
That would be quite a sale.
That would be.
I thought they, I thought they did pay eighty five percent. I'm looking here at the spreadsheet.
It's all right, Lisa. If you find out definitively, just send an email to us, please.
That's good to know.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Any more questions on this item?
Okay, always popular one, explore and support efforts to attract more business. Uh, the town has approved several developments for the with having construction started on the Santini development footnote, I I met with um Kevin Santini this week uh to discuss how it was going. Everything's uh going smoothly again. Interest rates are um affecting how he's moving forward. Uh, I encourage you to go look at the tri-town gymnastics center like it's basically across the street from Monet's Table um up in that that area there. It's a, it's quite a large building that they're putting. Um, it'll be a great uh great spot for the town. Uh, we currently have a development uh application for a fifteen thousand square foot medical office building uh off of Talon Stage Road. So that is, as you're going eighty four east, you're getting off of exit sixty nine off to the right. Um, is it, is this little white cape? I believe it's still there. Um, it's that property there. That we're again, we have a fifteen thousand foot medical uh office building uh being put in there. Uh, which was the result of a um progressive policy change from uh planning and and zoning commission. Uh, and the zone and uh the P P, the PCC is also rewriting some zoning regulations for the old technology campus zone that never really uh seemed to jump off the ground to create the Talon Commercial Zone. Uh, which offers a greatly uh expanded list of development possibilities and interest in the the in those TCZ properties has increased uh significantly since that change. Um, and I'll leave it at that. Uh, the town is working with the developer uh of the Elements Car Wash and that's going to be directly across the street from like when you come out of Big Wide Park and Lot onto one ninety five, right across the street there. Uh, they're gonna, they're they're uh moving forward with that car uh car wash process. Uh, while we're in the area, that new Starbucks is moving forward, a gas station um on the other side of Goose Lane as opposed to uh Sammy's uh is is also uh moving forward as well and also the the New Jelly is up and running. The Economic Development Commission is working to identify uh the highest and best use of some of our most valuable remaining commercial property in the hopes of helping uh to market and further refine policy to attract quality development in those locations. I have great confidence in the Santini Development. Um, when people start moving into as well to to start filling up some of those uh vacant properties and really moving forward here in the town. Uh, any questions on that?
The Starbucks and the gas station, is that where the old BP used to be?
I would call the gas station Getty, but I'm old. Um, it's currently the abandoned one that, you know.
So that, so.
It was BP.
Do you know, Brian?
It was Getty before that.
Do you know if there's going to be any um, and this would be, you know, through the atomic fires recommendation and town highway department, but is there going to be any changes in infrastructure there for a drive? I mean, there's not a whole lot of room for for cars there. Not a bad, pretty heavily trafficked uh workplace.
All those things are taken into consideration to include traffic in and out the driveways, to include water and flow of water off the parking lot, ice across Goose Lane, which is currently a problem. New structure, drive through, keep in mind uh the current structure, there's land behind there that was not developed. So there's, there's, it's a bigger footprint than what it looks like.
Okay.
Yep, so it is going to be a decent layout.
Well.
And that was a purify planning as well.
Yep.
That's good. So it's going to be bigger.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I have a comment and question, but um, you know, it's on the EDC, I've been able to see some of the work that they're doing with this uh land use project and I think it's a, it's just a really cool project and it's in the beginning stages now, but definitely when it becomes more developed. And explore it a little bit further. Um, also, you know, we touched a little bit about this. I want to bring it up. In terms of like tax, they answer our taxes and services, something we uh town center had a conversation about that and uh should we be having a conversation about it?
You're going to have an opportunity to consider that for the car wash.
Okay.
Um, I I have no recommendations and that's coming your way.
Okay.
Uh, so yes, we do consider it and there's one in the pipeline.
When, when is that conversation?
I hesitate to guess, but um it was discussed with me last week, so it'll be, you know, it's on that when they want to bring it forward.
That's the one that's going to be going in by Big Y?
Right across the street, yep. They've made it clear to our development director that we're looking for some sort of tactfully burning. He was, he was told to bring it to you.
I think Joe. I'm just about the medical facilities, you know, what like is it?
No idea. No idea.
So um, do you like to move back up for sale? And I know historically when that business was up for sale, we have the opportunity to tell itself. I build. There was always this, why didn't the town do it? Chance to do it?
I would echo that.
Uh, so is it, would the town consider doing that again now that it's up for sale?
The business itself that you mentioned is up for one point five million. The building itself and property is at around four million.
And I just, what would be the process even that that sort of a decision?
Uh, that'd be the the complete process with planning and zoning and the Economic Development Commission uh in land acquisition uh to to move forward there. And then the council would obviously have to approve anything, any land acquisition over a certain amount, you guys have to.
Yeah, I'm guessing they're asking the
Yeah, it seems it's.
It seems like a very high number. Now, moreover, there are a lot of, they're recovering rent, there are a lot of moving parts.
Oh, sure. And a lot of interest um in those properties.
In those way, so. Um, so the step would be planning is on first, we have to.
I'm guessing I can look into that for you, Joe.
I mean, since, you know, the town had raised it and re-read it. The opportunity is coming up again, I'm just saying.
It'd be done out of a development office. Yeah, and within within appraisal value, um, then looking at our pay for it.
Well, I would echo Joe's sentiments there. It would be great to understand what the process is.
Okay.
Uh, from certain end because my guess is uh that it might require a referendum decision. Right? Because
Yep.
when you're talking about a certain threshold and then does the you know, uh, there's timing issues, right? If it's for sale and we have to go to referendum, you know, how does that impact? You know, other potential buyers, et cetera. So it would be really, really great if you could
I'm happy to do that.
get us a summary of the process.
Sure.
Um, so that we can understand it.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, because if the town, town's interests is to get rid of this sort of vision. I guess we have to understand first, new buy goes in, takes that property, do they, are they granted, so we can't touch them, just like the like the existing buyer. Um, so
Yes.
obviously something to think about.
Yes, and we are questioning that extremely closely.
What buildings does that include?
Subway.
At least the rumors I've heard is, and please just spell them now, is that it's, it includes the upper portion of properties.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
That entire building?
I think it's a, I think it's a three possible scenarios where you can buy just I don't buy just the subway, but you could buy just the don't club.
Yes, that's that's at one point five.
Or you can buy the whole.
Yes, just the business.
Or just the business.
Yeah.
Where you buy the whole building, which includes the basement, additions and everything.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian.
You?
Uh, no, I'm stuck with the sentiments, I want to see.
Your question.
Yeah, but I think you, I think, Brian, you answered Joe. So somebody from the business might that's concerned there, somebody that wants it from that works there, that the business is.
They don't even, no, they're now still has the same rights. Previous.
Right, so it's grand profit.
Yeah.
So I guess my next question is if they change business, does business now have to go through the same steps of planning and zoning? Or new businesses?
If a, if a new owner buys it and wants to keep it running, they will come applying for a license. They would be granted bother in uh.
Right, but I mean, with the new business, I think it's just C V and just, but you know what I mean? Like, would that have to go through C V S? Because that's the same.
A new business would have to go through the same process as well. So. Good.
Thank you.
All right, the ordinance sixty, uh, our ordinance sixty policy change and increasing communication to invite eligible residents to participate in the program. So ordinance sixty underwent a benefit change in twenty twenty three with a grant list. Um, it is, it is uh been successful, I believe, not too successful in that it's too expensive. Uh, through the increased publicity via the website, uh, the spring uh newsletter and assistance from the human services uh office, we received and approved twenty new applications this year. Any questions?
I know that the tax office is very busy with the new assessment and we have, we're rushing property tax bills out a time that seems like a a good landing time for them. Could we get um a more in-depth update on the changes to ordinance sixty?
Put it on the jet, as an agenda.
Yeah, but I don't, yeah, please, but I also want to schedule it and try. Okay.
Revalle into whatever.
Yeah, right. I I know there's a lot going on there, so um I want to be sensitive to that, but I also think that, you know, this council uh did not see that hasn't been presented with ordinance sixty. Um, and uh, I'm very interested in an understanding of the um increased communication that has happened, that has happened, pardon?
And the adjustment too. Uh, remember we adjusted the 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 process and everything.
Right, right.
The cost wasn't really yet.
Yeah, and and how the application process is going, if there's any anecdotal, um, you know, reports from the tax office on, you know, how they think it's going. Um, I think it would be great to get an update on ordinance.
And is there wiggle room for an increase? And yeah, I concur.
Yeah.
Yep, happy to get that on agenda.
Thank you. Yep.
Where were we? Brian, do you have any idea? And I'm not, you know, this answer now, but if there's even a way for us to know, like, is the ordinance sixty being utilized? Are are the people, is the population is trying to certainly, do they know, exists, like, I guess, are there people with, like, how many people in town are else that, you know, aren't getting it? Is there like, you know, do you have a little way to compile like that type of information?
We can look into it. Now, what what we can look into is the number of people who are using it, the number, basically what we've budgeted to go into that program, doing it, are we near that number? Are we under? Are we over? Um, and then and then move forward from there. I again, I want to get it into our tax bills, actually on the tax bill, um, put on there, you know, if you're a senior, you don't consider this, uh, ordinance sixty, find information here, that sort of thing. Um, but I'm happy to to have that be in a on an agenda item coming up and ask exactly what you asked, like spring.
Just so you know, I'm going to ask questions about communication of the, of the ordinance and what efforts the town has already put in place and what, if any, improvements we could make to them.
Awesome.
Just as a heads up. The question. Just as a heads up, the question.
Responsible management, item L, responsible management of town-owned properties. So I, 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 this was an ask of mine. Create an inventory and a database of town-owned properties and involve stakeholders in identifying opportunities for further land acquisition or uh unneeded property that could be sold to the public. Um this is something Dave had brought to me. His staff is wrapping it up. Uh they anticipate previewing it with Planning and Zoning Commission, their July eighth meeting. Uh as their support will be necessary to dispose any property, if it's uh if it is, then to be developed by a private developer and getting counsel soon thereafter. So you'll be, you'll be on top of everything as that happens. But it's uh something that was long overdue and Dave's idea to do, so we're, we're moving in the right direction there. Questions? Okay, um number two, promote sound infrastructure. A, advocate to replace equipment and require infrastructure improvements in a timely manner in accordance with the capital improvement plan. Um as you know, I've taken, unfortunately, my directors know, I've taken a micro approach to equipment and infrastructure. Uh what I learn in this approach, I share with our finance director to responsibly create our capital plan uh and move forward. And that I, you know, you know, I don't like spending on things, but at the same time, I know we're going to have to spend at some point, so we have to kind of uh be responsible in laying out that plan. Uh we will use our consultants as needed. As I said earlier, I go out and inspect everything that goes on our capital plan and scrutinize the, the need and value for the items um and, and to reflect, to, we even need them in the first place, do we need to replace them? Um and should we refurbish? You know, just, just everything. There's been some things that were, you know, supposed to be done two years ago that, you know, when I looked at it, it's, no, we don't need to do it. And, and like our football field, they, you know, there was a plan to do that last year. Um our, our field is in great shape, so uh we will, we will be doing some refurbishing on the track, but uh these are the types of things. I want to go out and I want to see, show me where the field is bad. Show me the rip, show me the terrace, that sort of thing, so. Um show me the pavement, show me the concrete, show me the dishwasher, just I want to see and then I can communicate that to you. Uh as, as in regards to uh responsible management, um we'll have the consultant, public safety consultant for, right now we're operating off the other one. John's been great in getting uh the, the amount of his fleet down. You saw that we had a surplus of, of equipment, uh as I tried to pare down and now all of that equipment was uh surplus and not replaced. Uh and I'll continue to look for places and, and pick buildings up, shake them upside down, see what evolves out that we can get rid of. Um and, and looking at um lowering our costs as an overall goal. Any questions?
No, I just wanted to say, I appreciate you doing, you know, that is responsible management to me, obviously. Being raised in this town, as a, as a kid, I never really knew what the town manager was doing. And still coming here every week, obviously, I'm very involved in, in what we do and what you do, but um getting to see it firsthand and um getting to see the things that you do out of your office. Uh I think is a great service to the town, so I just wanted to say that, uh I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Very kind of you to say.
I just feel what Alex said, I think you even sort of found some equipment that we may not have realized we had and have found ways to stay with me. Obviously, we definitely appreciate that.
So while we're there, we got about thirty-two thousand dollars off of that surplus that I'm going to the uh C N R E again. My only ask is that I find gold card for uh many of our commissions to use to add commission P C C and also our rec department uh as well. Um and I'll come to the bag and shoot. As best I can.
Thank you.
Okay, um complete, complete fire station improvements within budget project by November twenty twenty-five. I can promise you we will be, be within budget, uh the, the amount of money budgeted for that. Um November twenty twenty-five uh is, is cloudy, uh as the, the build is taking a lot longer with the fire station at three forty. Um but again, and, and we're, we're still contracted with the old engineer uh with those projects as well. I think, I do think we will be able to uh start moving forward um in the summer and fall uh with construction in twenty twenty-five, whether or not it'll be completed. You know, maybe the money will be encumbered by then, uh but completion might be a story. Questions? Okay. Uh town council to advocate for crumbling foundations issues. So applications for assessment reductions due to crumbling foundations have decreased over recent years, which is good news. Uh corrected foundations, uh twenty-five, I'll face the new abatement is twelve. So uh more coming off the books than going on is based on that means. The assessment uh continues, uh the, the assessor continues to attend Prague and C F uh S I C uh meetings to advocate for continued funding and alert our representatives to act on uh regular uh related legislation. Let me just say that Jason is um one of the experts in Connecticut on this and attends almost everything uh in regards to this and has looked to a lot for direction on it. Um and legislators count on him, his, him and his advice uh in data regularly. Uh the assessor's website is linked to the town site for crumbling foundations uh for information. Any questions? Okay, continue to pursue solutions to address our well water concerns. This is ongoing. Uh we continue to work with the Road Salt Task Force, Connecticut Deep, uh D P H, Eastern High and Health District and resident, and residents on issues to identify a solution, uh solutions based on the work of our consultant, Langdon, uh at multiple residential locations in town. Any questions? I believe we provide updates um almost every council meeting on it. Uh build a sidewalk on the town green. Um obviously a goal of the last few councils. With the support of town council and our town attorney and staff, we've moved steadfastly towards this goal. Uh we are navigating uh several legal matters. To this point, uh we have had positive outcomes in every legal decision that's come forward uh and come out of the courts to this point, but again, we move cautiously. But again, steadfast fast in making that the, the green, which is the center point of our town, uh accessible to all. Questions? Good. Uh continue to identify and address accessibility in public spaces throughout town. A, ADA accessibility continues to be in our central focus and certainly one of my uh main concerns in coming here and a close spot in my heart for it. It's a consideration in every new project, and obviously consideration in every new project that we do, if not a requirement by law. And we are constantly trying to push improvements to existing uh facilities forward. Most recently, uh we've improved the ADA walkway that actually goes into the water down at Crandall's Pond. Uh and we're looking to uh in- increase accessibility to the historic Talon Green, as I mentioned before. Uh the commission of people with disabilities can uh continually assess his needs throughout the community. I work closely with them. Our staff works closely with them, regular communication. Um the Colleen obviously works closely with them as being uh the liaison uh for the commission. Uh we try to uh work with them on creative ways. I remember the Girl Scouts project and such, to always just keep pushing that needle forward. Uh the commission uh recently opened a survey to all town residents and gained valuable feedback from the community members uh to review this fiscal year. Questions?
I just got to make more of a comment. I know the commission of people with disabilities, very thankful of the support of town council. Especially you, Brian. They mentioned you and you support them and uh this group has been together for, I think since originally created, except for a couple that moved around, but um just wanted to let the entire council know they're very thankful. Sports, ADA.
And let me say that I'm thankful to them, coming from a different land in the sea apart from, I've seen um commissions that are vigilant, to say the least, um and they are, they are very reasonable and supportive um and understand the idea of pushing the needle forward and just keeping, making improvements. So uh that, that, that is a two-way street. They're, they are uh just a fantastic commission to work with. Good.
Thank you.
Uh promote sound recreational opportunities. And that was, that ARPA idea was a great one. I don't know who came up with it, utilize ARPA funds uh to provide and reduce costs for recreational service opportunities. Uh the utilization of ARPA funds towards reduction of recreational services has been a great success, to say the least, bouncing out of um COVID. And I think that, and that was just really the organic um use of ARPA funds, the most organic use you could have, I believe. Uh we've seen an increase in recreational activity, participation, which in return has hopefully brought about uh helping your lifestyles physically and mentally. As the end of May, the Recreation Department has been able to provide uh three hundred and over three hundred thousand in program reductions. Uh I will continue to promote these programs relentlessly, as you, I'm sure you see on social media. I drive by Crandall's uh at least twice a day. Uh try to promote everything out as much as possible. And it's, it is just a full house today, three lifeguards, full beach. It was um, it was fantastic. Uh kids all over the place utilizing the basketball courts, the, the baseball fields, the beach, just to, just running around rampant. It's fantastic. Any questions?
I just got to mention, you said you don't know who the Tammy that did?
Yep.
It started over and willing to, I believe, and especially you grabbed that idea, but yeah, it's definitely been a great success. I think Alex, you might have brought up your own budgets even some point, I don't even know anymore.
Couple weeks ago, yeah.
No, but I was gonna say concern on. But yeah, it's been a great success and and I know you're very proud. The new document.
Great, we'll keep moving forward. It'll be a fountain uh at tomorrow, I believe. For an air radiator, that fountain, um but it'll look nice and, but all, but also improve the water, water quality. I know back in the seventies when I was lurking around those waters, the water quality was not so great. Good news, long, no long-term side effects. Um so that the air radiator will be in there, uh and the air radiator will be in there, uh hopefully again, uh tomorrow, I'm gonna meet them at eight thirty. Um any other questions?
Just a question that I just kept popping up from some of the residents up and speaking with, if you would give an update just on the the little antiquated snack bar that's there. That's the, the majority of the questions, I guess, also that needs to be updated. Um and then a second question on that is going forward with the popularity growing of Crandall's of what it should be. Um do you think there's going to be an access control uh with that for the town or who's, who's coming and who's, or is this?
I hope it gets that popular.
Okay.
But right now, right now, that's not an issue at all. Um in regards to the building, please tell them it's within our capital plan. Uh and I was working with the Recreation Department, the Recreation uh Commission, and they had, they had one of their, one of the recreations that uh, they advised us to build more recreational sports fields over behind the Cider Mill uh cemetery where the town has some land. Uh and, and, or either purchase land or pass the land, but it was gonna cost about three or four hundred thousand to do that. My suggestion was, let's move that to a new building uh at Crandall's where your, where the snack bar is, where the, the, the bathrooms are. Uh the offices, the nurses' station, if you want to call it, it's more of a garage.
Game station, yeah.
Yeah, and the, the building's older than me, um and it's, it's been there, original and certainly all lived its life and purpose, but it's I don't want to say an embarrassment, but um it's, it's certainly time for an update. So yes, that is within our capital. Uh moving forward.
And when would that be?
I think it's gonna be four years out now. Well, Lucy, do you remember how far out that building at Crandall's? Well, I think it was four years, I'm certain. Uh it was, and it was the last year, but it's there now. You can see it in the capital plan. I think we had it done at six when I first got here. Now it's, I think, at four or five.
Right.
And that concept is a pre-purchased, you know, building like a, a barnyard or that sort of thing or clovers, you know, along those lines where we talk in place, but you know, on this plumbing issues and such.
Hopefully I can outbuild it, look forward to it.
What's that?
Said, hopefully I can outbuild it.
On the side, cash. All right, fantastic. Um.
I just wanted to add my nephews there, my uh brother and sister-in-law said their gratitude for Tyra and Kenau.
That i- it is fantastic. I encourage you during the morning, just drive over, their kids are going, running around, really, really just going crazy there and all over the place. And then uh, you know, and it's just such a positive thing to see and have it looking so good again and um to have people with umbrellas set up on the beach and towels and, and it's just, uh it's, it's great for the town. I'm glad to hear that and and that's, that's great news. Anything else? Okay, uh your goal of expanding services offered by our recreation center. Um added several new programs. It's the, it's one of the few, again, keep in mind that the rec department largely self-funds itself too for a lot of this stuff. Uh so we've added a, a lot of programs, the crew after-school program, uh several new time spots for indoor pickleball court time. And that's, you know, mostly during um the wintertime, uh pickleball lessons, uh three new parent-child classes, giggles and go, curious kiddos. Little leapers, please don't ask me what these are. Um we also expanded our food explorers program uh due to its, 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 its its success and also the new ice rink and liners uh has been uh, was, was a good success this year with the, the, thanks to both recreation and D P W. Uh future programming, twenty-four, twenty-five, we ran an afternoon class for our Talon Tykes preschool, three-year-old program and plan on hosting an open house uh and hosting an open, open house at the lodge on exactly that. That program, the Talon Tykes, as you know, I promote it as much as I can, has been a great success, um and great for our town. Any questions? Okay. Collaborate with the recreation board, uh recreation advisory board as needed. Uh as I spoke to the, uh before on those fields and switching over to the, the new facility, they were fantastic about. Uh the recreation department has collaborated with the advisory board in various ways to ensure effective planning and the implementation of recreational programs and services. Collaboration with the recreation department's advisory board enhances communication, transparent, good involvement in the shaping of our town's recreational opportunities for residents. So uh basically what we're saying there is we don't decide randomly uh where our rep department's going. It's done with the advisement, the uh recreation advisory board. Um it's certainly, a couple of years ago was not as um robust as it is now, and I'm thankful to the board and Bruce for really recharging that board. Questions?
I think another comment, Bruce is banned, I've gotta say Bruce is banned.
Yep.
He's just on it. Um the N R A's report is to, but Bruce. He's a.
Very positive.
Yeah, he's a very positive guy.
Okay, moving on, engaging citizenry to be more committed to the betterment of the entire community. Uh A, with a balance of uh among open space, residential and economic development. I continue to work closely with our land acquisition and conservation uh groups to responsibly manage our town's natural beauty while at the same time exploring future business and commercial development. Um again, that's a, that's a delicate balance. You know, we're looking at that property over up at Torrey Road. Uh I, I think uh with the, with, on the land acquisition commission with uh Chris Moran and I, so we're both neither, sold either in either direction. Um and keep an open mind um moving forward as though there'll be a lot of input uh in doing so. Also, you know, the, the um Conservation Commission has the Conservation Corps in our surplus of equipment. We were able to get them a, a quad that was virtually just left abandoned for a decade. Um and a trailer that John had kicking around that was donated. Uh with that, they were able to uh parlay that into a uh grant opportunity from the Harvard Foundation to get an actual large-scale like landscape trailer to move all their equipment. Um now, uh you know, I, I try to think of that as much as possible. You know, there was a sign in front of Crandall's of the park, the, the the tennis courts, the pickleball courts, when the state was building it. It was two boat, two four-by-four, two eight-foot, four-by-four's pressure-treated. They would get thrown in the dumpster typically. I called I called McCann and he comes, I said, do you want him? He comes and takes him. We have that kind of constant communication. He used those two posts to put up a new sign, maybe in front of the, uh, we're all, we were talking about what we just needed. Uh so they are, that conservation corps just does uh great work. Um, let's see. Any questions on that? Okay. Support tourism, uh efforts to attract people to our town, encourage residents to utilize existing activities within the town. And tourism might not be the right word. Um you know, it, we, we changed the Connecticut tour, or the Talon Tourism page to the Explore Talon page. And really, it's a way to promote all the great stuff uh that we have in, in here in town. That is uh entirely Brenda Falusi. Uh I work closely with her. Uh she, she runs Explore Talon to encourage residents to enjoy our parks, our trails, and farmers markets uh so much. She's always pushing everything and she's involved with that at the state level as well. I talked about the uh, the quad and trailer that donated to the Conservation Corps. Um you know, I constantly promote our parks, our trails, I run our trails, our facilities uh haven't grown. Uh I try to promote all this stuff as much as possible. Uh Explore Talon has been active with the Connecticut Central Regional Tourism District, Connecticut Countryside, the Talon Green Market and various social media platforms uh with increased visitors to our town. So you know, it, it's, it's, at the same time, we want visitors to come into our town, but it's also, you know, making sure our town residents are aware of what's going on out there, what we have to offer. And, and with that, I'll bring more people that want to come to our town. Uh reasons to sections include uh highlighting businesses and recreational areas on social media, increasing attendance at the Talon Green Market, increasing visibility of assets on C T visit. Uh one major addition is having both Talon Farmers Markets included in a statewide coloring book featuring goals, including increasing Instagram following and revisiting every town has a story campaign that was. revisiting every town has a story campaign that was interrupted by COVID. So Brenda has just a lot of energy on this and is always knocking me up, knocking on my door with an idea like the coloring book, which, you know, fantastic. She does a great job. I'm very, very lucky to have volunteers like her around. So um, thankful that she does that. Any questions? Okay. Uh, improve transparency and communications to the public regarding the town budget. Uh, we maintain, this year we maintain the same level of transparency throughout this year's difficult budget processes as in past years. Uh, improvement on this was problematic and when there's conflict, nothing nothing personal, but when there's conflict on either side, anything we do or say has a bright light shined on it and can be interpreted as supporting one or not the other, uh, micro scrutinized. Um, hopefully as we move into next year, um, we can look to some with some, look towards some shared ideas uh, and agreement on how to uh, better get it out there. I will say that signage uh, will be improved on uh, referendum. Uh, as you know, I I dug into it, um, I I had some consternation uh, as well, uh, but that that will that will not happen again. And now it's revealed other sign problems in other areas that that kinda caused me to take time off. So, um, any questions? Okay. User recommendations of the mental health uh, task force to inform services uh, service offerings from human services. Um, so I'll just run through this. Uh, this was this was created by Bev and her team. They're fantastic. The local prevention council uh, is run by the assistant director of human services, Teresa, who we hired and has worked out great. Um, and has been actively meeting each month to review the review the two identified areas of need from the mental health and substance abuse task force, which are community education engagement and the need for expanded resources and services. The task force recommended the funding of a prevention specialist. That is key. Um, we will not be hiring the the prevention specialist, but we will contract out that service. Um, oh geez, the name escapes me. I'm losing my mind. Thank you so much. Through Hocking Bell. Uh, our case manager, uh, Gillian Fidler is is undergoing credentialing as a prevention specialist. One certified her role to take uh, take on responsibilities that were outlined by that task force as well, most notably serving as a community educator and coordinating certain events. Uh, the LPC has it has increased its involvement in the community promoting National Prevention Week uh, to community businesses and inviting them to partner uh, in this in this initiative. They were also at our uh, thank you to the to Walt and the Board of Education for letting them uh, do some run some uh, program into their schools last month, I believe it was. The LPC provided an educational flyer at the high schools uh, that offered both community and education resources as well as an opportunity to gain additional student members for our youth advisory board. The new youth advisory board will meet this fall to identify new opportunities and events, including participating in a community camp. Any questions?
Okay, so I'm here. Um, so I mean Jacob and I were on that mental health task force. I thought there was also a grant that helped There was a what? Probably were on together when I thought we talked about. Some sort of grant that helped.
Yeah.
Professional?
Yeah, no, the the prevention specialists would have planned a grant.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, the O two eight seven.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I, I agree. Do you remember how much that was?
I don't, but it was a good two or three years of prevention specialist at memory search.
Okay. Great. That's great that the follow on that uh, recommendation because the mental health task force must work really hard and like mental health never goes away. Yeah.
Yeah, that was our, I think our core recommendations.
Yeah.
All good.
Yeah. So that was it. Yeah, I know. It was on the last.
Uh, I have a question about the implementation of the mental health task force services with uh, the Board of Education. How's that?
Get an update on that. I don't know, because maybe yes. Is any problems? They've been great, you know. They sent a lot of into the stools. That's
Sure, but the mental health task force had specific recommendations.
For the board.
For the Board of Education as well, and it would be great to understand.
I can get an update.
The impact uh, the how those recommendations are playing out uh, within our school system as our youth are uh, have had significant impacts in mental health.
I can reach out to the board and find out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Track human services, track human service offerings to support town residents and identify unmet needs. Uh, in regards to senior activities, youth prevention council, various uh, state support programs and other programs as needed. The human services staff invented a new method of client tracking as of uh, this January. They detail uh, the this detailed method of tracking client interaction allows us not only to ensure an accurate metric for unduplicated services provided, but also track the number of interactions we have with each resident individually to show the repeated impact and variety of services that can be provided to just one resident family through case management and ongoing support. This method allows us to assess client needs and eligibility for a variety of state support group programs, support programs upon intake and has allowed us to identify gaps in resources that have met and continue to improve upon, i.e. provisions of forms, documents in Spanish, employment and career resources added to our uh, resource library. Uh, youth prevention metrics are captured and reported to the state through uh, through the approved data reporting platform each quarter. Senior center activities and participation are closely monitored, and we have a noted increase in attendance of residents, which uh, again, I try to promote our senior center. We also have, uh, I believe we got a grant to uh, uh, buy some software to help uh, track our senior center activities as well. Uh, any questions?
So you check what's Wasn't there some, so we're talking about the senior center, right? Yeah, we want to, anybody's. Wasn't there also a grant for something over there too?
There was, um, there was being the, was being operative work. We were, we are in the process and we haven't lost it. It's just gray as to whether we're gonna get it or not. Um, and that would be a dedicated uh, senior pickleball court over there. There's a possibility it may get yanked by the state, but um, you know, either way, we I'm still hopeful we're gonna get it.
Is there a reason why it might get pulled?
Chair, would you like to answer or do you know anything about it?
Yeah.
The state might have allocated that money elsewhere.
I see. Okay, I see. Bye. Okay, go wait and see. Thank you.
Um, provide opportunity for increased community engagement. Make an effort to be as forward facing and welcoming as possible in our community almost every single day. Uh, use social media to stay positive and create additional lines of communication engagement. Um, I I stop and visit darn near every minute, every community event that we have. Uh, plays, sports games, uh, I try to promote and um, I don't walk around with my head down kicking rocks. I try to talk and say hi to as many people as possible um, to get their input um, and be positive and and really promote all of us as a whole and the good work that we do around every opportunity. Uh, any questions? Okay. Review and develop policies to support inclusivity and unity for a safe and welcome environment for all Talon. This is an ongoing effort uh, with some positive outcomes. I work closely and maintain a positive relationship. Our people with disabilities, P flag veterans uh, and other groups to hear their concerns. Uh, also, when I got to to one of the, as of note, in just last month, when I got to Talon, I realized we were one of the only towns in the region uh, to not recognize uh, Juneteenth, uh, Juneteenth. Uh, I believe our council thinks that um, last year was, is this this council or was the council before? Do you remember Katie?
I think it was last year, yeah.
It's close, uh, whichever one. We didn't have it last year. Um, human resources, uh, they continually review our policies and any changes in state and federal employment law uh, to support this goal. Changes in the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five include revisions to the state uh, sick leave and and FMLA uh, laws. Uh, we also, you know, we we try to work with different uh, groups when there's a, when there's a position opening here in town and some creative ways um, to get them out to uh, different people. Uh, our our library uh, is upholding the values of the American Library Association, the Talon Public Library, continuing to offer information, resources, and programming that affirm equity, diversity, and inclusion and create an atmosphere where all feel welcome. In regards to talent, uh, for human services, they continue to ensure all residents of the talent community genuinely feel safe. Uh, feel a sense, I'm sorry, generally feel a sense of belonging when they're seeking our services, and they are breakdown. They're welcoming to everybody. Uh, we recognize the importance of feeling safe and welcome and have uh, developed the environment uh, of the human services offices aboard this. We ins- we ensured our space safeguards confidentiality and provides equal opportunities for all all to participate in the assistance programs that they are eligible for. Uh, we constantly evaluate our policies, forms, and procedures to to confirm that they are accessible to all those in our community, providing accommodations as needed. Um, I I'd also say that Bev is great in in anything new that comes up. She's always offering input along these lines. Uh, but I I believe that these types of values start at the top um, and that that I have to support them, and I do um, in regards to all of these matters. Um, that it just has to, you know, I've worked under leaders, different leaders who weren't overly supportive in these sort of things and some that were, um, and and the the difference is notable. So again, leadership starts at the top here. Again, with councils being great as well. Uh, Talon Youth Services continues to host inclusive uh, community programming. Uh, the uh, the Talon Youth Services Community Theater is a positive youth development and social emotional learning program that provides it's uh, provides itself, provides itself on encouraging participation in any of any child in the community regardless of his level of skill or ability. We promote, we promote strengths, a strength-based approach, finding a place on the cast for every child, open enrollment to children of all abilities, including those with special needs or neurologic, neural, neural development uh, diagnoses. Uh, that being said, um, our our youth theater is such a positive event. I think we're up to like seventy-five children in town. I encourage you to stop in and see it at some point over at the high school. I certainly do. I promote it as much as I can on social media. I own the plays uh, themselves, and it's just absolutely fantastic on so many levels. It ain't just about acting, it's lighting, it's it's um, you know, the AV work, it's there's music, it's just, it's it's fantastic uh, that that uh, that our our folks down in human services do this. Again, I believe about seventy-five kids will benefit from that. When you look at that, the youth services combined with our camps and recreation, we are doing so much for our children in town. Uh, coming out of COVID, it's it's uh, we we are certainly a leader, I believe, in the region in the in these sort of activities. Uh, any questions before I move on?
I just wanna put in a plug that uh, US Services play is July twenty-sixth.
See you there.
Yeah.
See you at one of them, which is.
That they're doing the little very There's going to be a seed over, that's my heart.
I don't know how they do it. You know, the volunteers that run those kids around. I mean, I would, I want to, I find it's incredibly energy, kids everywhere, you know, like I said, with the the camps. It takes a lot of energy and we're very thankful to all of them. Um, okay, moving on. Fostering a positive community uh, facilitate their civic engagement and talent sponsored events again. I try to go to everything and be everywhere to promote as much as I can, promote the talent. I understand that the promotion, what we have here in talent offers and we offer uh, really goes towards uh, the promotion of our own community as a whole. Um, our value as a talent, value as property owners. Um, everything is a holistic approach, everything tied into the uh, everything else through um, positivity actually. Any questions?
Thank you for the update. I I would just like to say that previous updates, uh, your updates have always been incredibly uh, and previously uh, some of these updates, you don't, I haven't seen as much detail as you put in. It's very clear that uh, you know, you're giving us examples. Um, you're really helping us to work on these goals and it's much appreciated.
I wish I could know that. Done much less. If I knew the bar.
Too late now.
Yeah, well, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll do this again in about six months.
Yep.
Great. That'll fun. Something worth it. Um, I really like it. Uh, the next item on our agenda is appointments to vacancies on municipal boards and conventions, and I believe we have two reappointments. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's Adam Grossman for land acquisition and then Nancy Forrest. I wish I could finish it up. Promised them. That was off memory. I did some of them on the agenda. Those are the names there. Uh, I think, I think, I think Sarah Beth reached out to, to Jane. I we appreciate that the all day done.
Thank you for reviewing those. And please send our thanks uh, to you and Sarah Beth for staying on top of these things. I'll see you around. You don't have to respond, but thank you. Um, any
Sarah?
No, Sarah, some vacations to come again. Is there any questions about these reappointments? Is there a motion to approve the two reappointments as outlined in agenda eight point five? By Counselor Newman?
Second.
Any further discussion? We do need to roll publics. We are seeing name, Counselor Newman?
Hi.
Counselor Shay?
Hi. Hi.
Counselor Utah?
Hi.
Counselor Ryan?
Hi.
Counselor Buckler?
Hi.
And I am also in eyes of unanimous. Thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda is item nine, which is old business. The next item is is um, item ten, and I think without objection. Or do, uh, we're gonna jump to item ten, which is the reported town answer?
Great. I haven't been talking.
No, no.
Jump in. Okay, let me just first say, we gotta, we're gonna get a new owl on January first. So we get a lot of complaints about the sound. Um,
January first or July first?
Did I say January?
Yes, you did.
Wait, so. We even entered the patient.
Uh, all right, so so you know, we hear a lot about the sound. The one in the library, the sounds, we have, we have two. Um, the other one's not much better. Um, I believe we're using whichever one had the better sound, but we hope to have that corrected um, in early July, whenever we get our hands on the funding and our hands on loan. You know, I already talked about the um, pitch study with the with the fire department. It's it's moving forward. The Herring Cove Pickleball Project is going slow, not by any fault of the town. Uh, just on the state end, it's moved, moved slow. Uh, Megan is hopeful we can get it on this year. And I say this year, you know, pre-winter. Uh, and we're hoping, still hoping that, but we're not uh, not positive on it. Celebrate Talent, uh, as you know, was a was a victim in the budget cut. Uh, that being said, I have a meeting next week or the week after uh, with Bruce, who ran the record, the director who ran uh, Celebrate Talent and with our PCC uh, as well as the Gene Soloyes, who also helped with Celebrate Talent. And the meeting is going to be to uh, as best we can or consider um, some other options. One of those options obviously would be the merging uh, some of these, the great things of Celebrate Talent into our Harvest Fest, as we have hold of a part of the green that had not been used in Harvest Fest. Uh, talking to Bruce today, cursory, you know, kid fun zone, inflatables, the dump tank, you know, those sort of things that we had at Celebrate Talent, um, and getting them over um, during the Harvest Fest. So uh, very positive, uh, some savings as well, but uh, certainly we don't wanna just abandon all the the good things at Celebrate Talent. Uh, there was a obviously some hurricane, hurricanes, um, some uh, tornado warnings, severe thunderstorms. I wanna thank DPW called some people in uh, on Sunday night. Obviously, Chief Vitell and his staff uh, did a great job. Uh, some, one of the first storm, we did all right with. The second storm, we saw some power outages and down uh, trees and lines. Uh, DPW had some cleanup. A lot of washout on on our unimproved roads uh, as well. Uh, they are completely caught up and did a great job uh, removing that uh, removing uh, stuff from the store. But as you know, that's something I monitor and try to communicate uh, during those incidents as much as I can throughout the town. Uh, we lean heavily on Eversource Frontier and and all those other uh, utility companies as needed uh, when there is an incident. Uh, there was a tree that fell on a house uh, on Rose Road. I thank the fire department, building inspector uh, for going out there quickly, uh, helping out as best they can. You know, John and his team go above and beyond, and Jim, the building inspector, just they they go above and beyond and help it out. If there's an old timer living there or something, uh, they're just fantastic. Um, in regards to the library, the media center. You know, when Barbara left, we wanted to do a, you know, Barbara, kind of John, um, the media center wanted to name it and do some improvements. Uh, Megan Mosses obtained twenty grand uh, to help do that. Uh, the library foundation might kick in some money as well. Uh, we got, we got a couple of, we got, we got a bad estimate. We're not a great company. That was referred to us. Uh, we struggled to find a second estimate. Megan did a great job at getting it. Uh, we struggled to find a second estimate. Megan did a great job of getting another company. We have a fantastic estimate now in front of us. Um, and we'll look forward to to move forward with approving uh that uh media center down there. When we have our joint uh B O E and um town council meeting, we're there, we are open the cameras, the acoustics, everything will be just perfect for us. Uh, for that, that was certainly not the goal. There's so many uh, they're 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 always doing something in there, uh, some sort of programming. And we want to make it a virtual option a- as well. The Nucleus Knitters have complained about the acoustics in there. Um, we'll we'll work to address that as well. They can't hear each other when they talk. Um, but we'll look to, we'll look to correct that. Uh, the 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 D P W bridge project is going well. Each week I check and ask, it's like I'm waiting for the the hammer to drop here, but they keep saying they're on track and it's going well. So I'm very happy. Any questions anyone else have? I didn't, I covered so much of my council goals. Um, that's, that's the end of my town manager report.
So I just wanted a question about the Harvest Fest is gonna be blended together now, so.
You're right, we don't know that. That's just an idea. Okay.
I think it's a great idea, but I think you mentioned the bounce houses and stuff, like are you gonna close down both ends of the road? Because if there's kids using.
We'd work through that. We'd work.
Sorry, I'm just thinking, right? Like, yeah, you know, like.
Obviously, safety and traffic and crossings will be
Just think.
Something that we would address.
Obviously, I just.
At the last Harvest Fest, we, they put up um the orange fencing along the one ninety-five section of the green. So that people couldn't just walk out onto the road and then the surf team was uh directing traffic at all the crosses. That's what was done last year. I, yeah, I just wonder if there's gonna be more children.
Hopefully.
That'd be great, which I'm just, thank you Katie for that reminder. But yeah.
We would have several meetings uh to include safety, to include um John, our traffic liaison and the safety standard.
Yeah, alright.
Um, the 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 uh issue with um the pickleball courts isn't about state funding anymore, right?
It's more about people. Megan just told me today, I just can't remember exactly what she said, other than, you know, it's it's getting cloudy, I'm getting done.
Yeah.
Not on our end.
Yeah, sure.
And you, again, you you pride loose, uh, what we needed to get pride loose, but if there's still some, you know, classes.
Sure, if there's anything I can do. That I would offer to any town.
Thank you. Yep.
Any other questions for the town manager? Okay, so item eleven is adoption of minutes. We have a number of minutes here. Um, is there any objection to approving these minutes together or do we need to do them on a time? Okay, so uh the first set of minutes is from uh June sixth, the special meeting minutes from June sixth. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Councilor Miranda, their second. Okay, second by Council Utah. Is there any discussion? Okay, so we uh do a roll call on this. Um.
Hi.
Council Shay.
Hi.
Council Murray.
Hi.
Council Utah.
Hi, Council Butler.
Hi.
Also an I, so that means the second is uh the June sixth, twenty twenty-four budget meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Uh, move to approve.
Uh, motion by Council Murray is our second. Second by Council Newton. Sorry, I'm sorry. No, no. Is there um is there any discussion on these minutes? Okay, uh, we will do a roll call vote then. Council Newton.
Check.
Hi.
Council Murray.
Hi.
Council Utah. Council Moran.
Hi.
Council Butler.
Hi.
I'm also an I, so that is units. Uh, the next item is the uh June eleventh, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes.
Uh, move to approve the June eleventh special meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council Moran, is there any discussion about these? Okay, um, we'll do a roll call. Newton, Shay.
Hi.
Murray, Council Utah.
Hi.
Council Moran.
Hi.
Council Butler.
Hi.
I am also at night, so that is passed. Uh, the next is the June sixth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minute.
Being June eleven?
Excuse me. Uh, yes, I do need June eleventh. I'm sorry. Uh, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
Uh, move to approve those minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Moran. Is there any discussion about the June eleventh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes?
So I have a um, section three point four where it mentions that I asked for clarification, criteria for the historic district commission. Says that this Nivison noted it's recommended that two live within the district, like we that, Council Rand and I were um basing our part, basing our decision on that, well, we thought it was required to um, two individuals live within the historic district area and not recommended. Wasn't sure if that was just a, a misquotation or that Sarah Beth can't leave her on vacation on that question, but Sarah Beth, I thought it brought that up. I I thought it was that it was a requirement. If if there were two available that two had a certain, the reason I bring that up because people question, well, why did you choose two people who live in the district and said, well, we believe it's a requirement. I just want to make sure that is in fact.
There is a requirement in the charter. I just don't exactly remember the number. There is a there is a, I just don't know how many.
Point, uh, sorry, I'm on code uh ninety-six dash three. At least one of the members and one of the alternates shall be residents of the historic.
Shall be.
One and one. One of the members and one of the.
The alternate, okay.
At least one.
Okay. A little different. Because we already had the alternate, knew was was a resident of the district, but I could do the person we chose as a regular member. And now we have two that I believe are both residents of.
Yep, and it's two shall be, at least, you know, one shall be, at least one shall be, so that there's no maximum, it's just a minimum.
Um, yeah, at least.
Did you, do you think that the minutes were limited or okay?
I mean, I mean, it's it's fine. Um, just recommend I think it's, I think we should change that to is required, required that two live within.
Okay, can we add a note to the minutes that for clarification purposes?
Yeah.
Our town code chapter ninety-six dash three A good reading that, requires one resident, one regular member and one alternate to be a member of, sorry, resident of this historic district mention.
So adding a note, not making a mention.
Yeah, sure. Is that okay?
Yeah.
That way. Okay.
Yeah.
So is, can we uh alter the motion then to include that note?
Think I made it.
Jacob made the motion? I think he made it too, but you made the motion?
No, no, I think. Yeah, but sure, forty-five minutes, it's it's.
Six eleven regular, Mr. Murray and Mr. Moran.
Okay, are you okay with adjusting?
Add a note.
To add the note?
Yes.
And you're okay as well? Okay. Thank you very much, Lisa, for keeping track of that. Is there any other comments about these minutes? Okay, uh, then we'll do a roll call vote. Council Newton, Council Shay.
Hi.
Hi.
Murray, Council Utah.
Hi.
Council Moran.
Hi.
Council Butler.
Hi.
I'm also an I. And lastly is the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Uh, move to approve those minutes.
Murray made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Shay. Is there any discussion about these minutes? Okay, uh, then we shall do a roll call vote. Council Newton, Council Shay.
Hi.
Council Murray.
Hi.
Council Utah.
Hi.
Moran.
Hi.
Council Butler.
Hi.
I'm also an I, so that passes as well.
Okay, that was urgent, but I was guessing there'd be some, maybe we should, I might do something.
Sure, sure. Don't. That's what we do. Alright, uh, item twelve is correspondence to council. Utah.
Uh, thank you. The email is slowing down, so, um, so I put emails after June sixth. Um, we had a writer ask why two previous organ members supported the latest budget reduction to the budget. Um, then we had a writer ask for um, counselor to take down a social media post, um, and we covered a social media policy. A writer, um, requested, I'm sorry, a writer would like a question on the referendum ballot on why you vote yes or no. Um, and then the other one regarding Facebook. Um, writer suggested to include uh past referendum field attempt numbers as context uh on a referendum ballot. Uh, writer hoping council would rethink budget reductions. And then Chris did a good job at the beginning about the proclamation of Dave Gary. So I also had that in there. And then, um, we had two emails um regarding two people stepping down from the permanent self-creation. Is any you say something?
Thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
So we uh will move on to the chairperson's report, item number thirteen. Uh, I just wanted to remind council members uh of the town manager review process. I've received um the review paperwork, the review notes from one council member. So if everyone else uh could add this to their to-do list and get that. Yeah, it was, it would be great to get them. Today was the deadline.
I've had a lot of thinking to do, so.
Oh, yeah, no, understood. So, okay, that happened, I really do. Yeah, yeah.
No, sorry, I.
We could get it by the end of the week. If everybody can send it in, that way it can compile it all. Jacob and I have a plan to uh discuss the draft and then we'll set up a uh executive session to review uh what the topic. So.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys, for getting on that.
Do we get the draft, do we get the draft before the executive session?
Uh. Sure.
Yeah.
It's just that literally I take everything and put it together. I I'm gonna try to like group things together, so it makes a little bit of sense, but other than that it should look very familiar. It's all your comments should be, right? So that's.
You know, just the.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, sure. Yeah. Okay, um, I also um am relieved that the town budget passed by the fourth try. Uh, I know that the town needs to succeed with the budget uh to plan services for the next fiscal year. I know that the taxpayers need to go out, um, and I'm grateful that a budget was passed uh to uh move forward. This budget will have impact on town services. Uh, we ask more and more of our town uh cert, uh town employees every every day almost, and um, we did not provide the requested funding uh for various departments. Uh, the uh department of public works was impacted by this budget. The education was particularly impacted and these impacts were by our staff and our youngest uh residents of town, our students, with seventy percent of households in town having, being a family household. Um, I know that this this impact will be felt all throughout town. Um, we also know and heard that a number of families that uh live in town are here because of the school system. And the uh budget passing with uh significant underfunding of the request of board of education. Uh, will impact our property values, um, and that will be felt by every single property of our town. There there are already, uh, I've been part of conversations with students, uh, asking questions about, will they have French class next year? Will my favorite teacher uh be there next year? Um, will the the collective, I want to be available? And those are hard questions to answer when you're looking again in the base. And they know that there are other opportunities in other districts. So we will see these impacts this year and in. That's it for me. Uh, there are communications and additions from townspeople? Council, Council Ryan.
Um, two things. One, um, well, they just, I think Brian mentioned that they're trying really hard to get. So, oh, sorry.
Okay.
So just thank you for that.
Yeah.
For doing work over time, I'm sure, trying to get that out. Um, and then, um, also, you check mentioned, um, I think we have two vacancies on the P C C, so obviously they do a lot of great work. A lot of new engagement, so.
More than it should be easy to do. Okay, yeah. Okay, I'll I'll do something extra.
Council Utah. Sure, I actually have a list, so if somebody else wants to go first, just things I've collected through email. Various things, um, just things to think about with the council. Um, first, I wanna also thank everyone that came up to vote, the budget passed, and thank you for staff everywhere for being patient while we. Um, I just want, these are just suggestions that we got through, um, regarding, quite a few about social media policy, um, recent, wanna add one, but it is we are in certain areas, or that's that's not the one to take up and review. Um, I don't know how old dated. And then I think we should revisit correspondence procedure. A lot of those emails, we don't get, but we expect years, I don't know if that's something way look into, or if they don't provide an address, we just include it, but I don't want to do that either. So I just think that's important, because I wouldn't want to not include it, but we should at least have the same if we do it here, right? That makes sense. Um, just not looking for that council. Um, we also got an email regarding, maybe we want our policy and procedures might be a good idea. And especially the update on triple A, the finance advisors coming up next month, which is great. And I just wanted to thank Tony Moore and Celeste and Michelle for serving on the permanent celebration, as every person, and their time commitment they gave to talent. So I think those, Katie, are just things that maybe you did go to think about for any counselors. In that. Those are just over time that we got. And a lot of them were from our previous chair to uh the which he's wonderful and give a lot of great input, well, but, so, yeah. So, yeah.
Question for you probably. Um, that's correspondence, we're getting very unknown, but do we have or we just kind of?
I don't really think we do. We have policy on that. Um, I know, but if we have to be for it, we will.
I mean, the uh policies and procedures talk about uh summarization, you know, broad summarization of the correspondence. But beyond that, no, we do not have policy.
But they, they, the board of, they have a form to fill, but I can't remember if you have to put your address.
I don't, and I do, it is in the form.
Yeah, so, but you can you can't go do it individually too, so I'm just.
Well, we came to like correspondence, uh, just started jumping. Yeah, um, you know, I still don't like, we didn't include every email.
No, we don't do that.
I don't think it was policy.
Okay, nice. So, just to keep it. Yeah. Okay, and so, so, just to keep it, you know, up here, we're, yeah, I don't want to exclude peoples because they forgot. I mean, I could simply email back and be like, I need to ask your address in order to mention to, but it's just, you want to do that too. Or not do.
Section.
Yeah, I don't mind doing that, just. But anyways, that was just something, um, as I went through three hundred emails and I don't really know how many, actually do not have, I just said a good amount. But you recognize names and this stuff, but anyways, enough. Thank you.
Thanks for, uh, and just as my own comment, you know, I'm sure you want to be independent, stick, believe in this. Everybody enjoys the holiday and also.
Anyone else? We will move on then to public list, uh, item fifteen, public listed participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. I will start in the room.
John Lappin, one fifty-eight Mountman Road. As I sit here and listen to the town council, town, town, town council, I noticed that there was no update from the Road Salt Task Force. Has this group been disbanded? Has anyone from the public been offered to assist with this, as was previously mentioned at one point in time? I heard the town manager quickly state that he is in contact with this group, but that was it. I'd also like to just state that this is interesting that no one comments on my particular player property. While I cannot require any member of council, a member of the council to respond to my diatribes, it is interesting that no council member will publicly comment on my property, given that I am here consistently, close to a straight ear, and that members have directly commented to other people on issues brought up at the town council. The town poisoned my wealth. This is not an opinion, but backed up by multiple studies, many of which the town has paid for, which says something. It would be nice to hear some support from the town council for my situation. Furthermore, I know that the town's insurance carrier has drastically slowed down this process at rectifying the issue of my property. What steps has the town council or town manager done to expedite this process and keep the insurance carrier moving along? Have you looked at moving to a different character? I would love, I would love to hear more information about that. Finally, this process is an eight-year lengthy process. I don't have potable water, I didn't have potable water before. I would argue I'm in a worse situation than I am now. I have coliform, I have bacteria in my water. Before I could at least shower in it. Now, I wouldn't feel safe showering in it or bathing my child. Bacteria could potentially get into a mucus membrane through your eye, it was cut in your skin. It's, it's, I'm literally in a worse situation than I am, than I was previously. This is maddening, this is crazy. On top of this, as we just alluded to, the tax, the tax collection's coming out shortly. I'm paying taxes on a property that I can't use in its entirety. I've been ready since April one of this year to sell, and I have no ability to do that. I don't have potable water, I have coliform now in it. On top of that, I had no power for two weeks while they were doing the, while they were doing the wellwork at the property. I can't rent this property. I can't do anything with it, it just sits vacant right now, and I'm paying for it. This is crazy, and this is maddening, and I'm sure that the tax bill that comes out is gonna be expected to be paid in full and on time. And meanwhile, I'm sitting here with no timelines, no end, no definitive end dates. And while I understand there's a process to this, I'm also very aware that in this process was delayed by at least a year since getting to where, where we started, which was back in January, starting to have some movement. That's all that I have, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to comment? I'm not seeing anyone online.
George Dolridge, Fish Game Road. I just have a question on the, uh, the place that's been shut down. We're talking about how much it costs, what it's worth and all this, is it possible to do an eminent domain or something? What I envision with, with work there is to knock everything down, right to the, right to the on-ramp on a high. Knock it all down, perfect place, put a hotel, motel, kind of a, a name place in there, a name restaurant in there. We get a lot of tax dollars in, even if we had to go to referendum to get that land. Sell it with the idea that the whole purpose is to knock it down and bring in industry. If we start now trying to get somebody to go in there, maybe they didn't even pay for some of the costs. But if old outdated buildings, they've been there forty, fifty years or whatever. We have all that open space at the old IGA, IGA area. Some of the businesses could move up there, or we could even knock that place down because it's so far back. It was a grocery store, that's why it was so far back. We needed businesses closer to the road that catches people's eyes. That'd be another perfect place to put in some of these subways or other small restaurants or different types of things like right there. We need to think, be innovative and think of new ideas. Everybody's talking about the schools and the roads and all these other things. There's the places where we're gonna get the money, we gotta get the business in here. If we get a name restaurant, you know, bring in another one. We need to line up that whole area and, and bring in new industry, new. And right now, uh, if you look at Vernon and Ellington, you go down those E three and thirty and everything, uh, business after business after business. That's what we need, we have a section in town that we need to develop. And I'll be a pretty town, we can make most of it, keep most of it pretty, but we need development, I need fire. And let's think boldly about how we can do that.
Thank you. Anyone online? Okay. We will move on to item sixteen, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? Murray, is there a second?
Sorry.
Shay, is there any objection to adjournment? Council Shay, um, any, any objection? We got objection, then we are adjourned, thank you very much.